At 6:47 PM, I am Eric Greenberg, Chair of the Columbia Association Board of Directors. Please remember that this special meeting of the members of the Columbia Association is being livestreamed. You can find tonight's agenda and background materials on the CA Board's webpage. I will now call the roll. Dick.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Alan.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
Ginny.
Here.
And I am here. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any objections to the agenda? There being no objections to the agenda, the agenda is moved. The item on the agenda is the election of the King of Contrivance representative to the CA Board of Directors. Whereas the following person effective February 9, 2023, is the Columbia Council Representative appointed by the Board of Directors of the King's Contrivance Community Association, Keith O'Neill Jr. of King's Contrivance. Whereas pursuant to the terms of the Columbia Association Charter and Bylaws, and such Columbia Council Representative is a member of the corporation. Now therefore be it resolved that the members hereby elect to the Board of Directors effective February 9, 2023, Keith O'Neill Jr., the newly appointed Columbia Council Representative from King's Contrivance. I will move the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second by Ginny, I will now call the roll. Dick.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Keith.
Epstein.
Bill.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Ginny.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes 801. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Speech, speech.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Columbia, members of the Columbia Association? Any objections? Meeting is hereby adjourned.
Hey, you thought it was going to be 10:15? That was the quickest meeting.
That is about as fast as I can get through a meeting. That's about as fast as I can get through a meeting.
Ginny.
Here.
And I am here. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can you get a second? Second. Any discussion on the agenda?
Could I just have one question? Is it possible to add some time for, on the agenda, for Lake Elkhorn Stream restoration? Just say 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
It's a big subject, a lot of community concerns about it. And want us to hear what the testimony is tonight by anybody. And plus, trying to put together all the information on testimony from people. And all the information we got from Doug Myers, Richard Klein. It's, we really need to address some of that.
Hi Ginny.
Would this be, I'm sorry. Would this be a quick up-
Second on this first?
What?
Do we get a second on this?
Oh, I'll second it for purpose. This, would this be a quick update on like where the public could possibly interact? What the status is, that sort of stuff that we need?
I would really, really talk about the easement.
Okay, all right, okay.
Alan?
Yeah.
10 minutes you said?
I don't know this for a fact, but I've gotten word that March is an important date with WSSI. And I want to make sure we're, stay ahead of the game and know what our options are.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, so we got a, a motion or amendment by Brian and a second by Ginny to add 10 minutes to the agenda to discuss the stream restoration.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note that we spent a substantial amount of time at our January work session and our January meeting on this topic.
Duly noted. Andy?
I'd also point out that, I mean, here we are at the last minute adding something that the public doesn't know about to discuss, which is really not, you know, good, it's good policy. It isn't being transparent. I mean, nobody, you know, there are, lots of people are interested in, in the stream restoration, but nobody knows we're going to talk about it tonight. Except, you know, just us here as Brian.
A further discussion on the amendment?
We do have a board operations committee meeting in less than two weeks if we wanted to put it on a future agenda.
Ginny?
But the board operations committee meets the end of February, which means we will have missed also the February 23rd meeting if there's any need for action. And it wouldn't go on till second week in March. So that may or may not be too late, I don't know. But I don't think that's, that'll work.
Alan?
In most instances, I would agree around the transparency. This is a work session. Getting a 10-minute update without any votes or decisions makes sense. And then the public can be alerted if there is something that we'll certainly have to add to a future agenda and have more discussions and have a vote.
To Ginny's statement, I was just wondering, what, what is the specific need for action associated with this? I was not aware of anything specific.
As I said, as I'm told, that March is an important date from WSSI. And if we wait until March to figure out what our options are, it may be too late.
Okay, what is specific about it's an important month? That, that's pretty vague.
The theory is, as I understand it, is that the way the process goes, that once WSSI does its response to the, all those questions that the government has had for them, that will continue the process. Then we, we're chasing the process instead of staying ahead of it. And it's possible that we will miss an opportunity to weigh in if we wait until after that.
So Brian, is there a key time sensitivity to?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I call it.
So real quick, just a reminder that in the spreadsheet, which was updated and on the web, there is a note there that the staff has final approval on the plan. This is not, you know, March is not that, it's a critical date for perhaps the funding mechanism, but it's got nothing to do with the plan. And there is, and per Alan, I did update the, the flow chart that now shows that there is an approval process that includes CA.
Thank you.
Bill?
Did we have, as a board, have any concerns about the funding mechanism or the creation of the bank for this? Because we haven't had any testimony on that.
Well, there's been plenty of testimony on the, the funding banks.
Not during this board's term.
Yeah.
We, we had a discussion about green infrastructure last month. I believe that's the only time that this topic has come up as a board discussion.
No, actually, I asked at one of the meetings exactly how much a credit they would get for a credit, how much money they were putting into the project, how much they anticipated as a profit. But that was two meetings ago or three meetings ago.
That answer?
And I asked if they, yeah.
So at, at this point, I think we're actually using our 10 minutes to discuss whether or not we're going to discuss, so I'm going to call the question.
Okay.
On the amendment to add 10 minutes to discuss the stream restoration, Dick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Andy?
No.
Ginny?
Yes.
I vote yes. 10 minutes will be added under 4G for stream restoration. Now, can I, now I'll call the question on the agenda itself, assuming there's no further discussion. Ginny?
Yes.
Andy?
No.
Bill?
No.
Keith?
I'm sorry, first time, what am I?
So we're, we're, sorry, we're, we're voting on approving the agenda. So the, okay. Alan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion to approve the agenda passes 9 to 2, or 7 to 2. That'd be very hard to get, 9 to 2. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, could, could we introduce our newest member, Keith, to the folks here and the folks watching online?
Good idea.
Good idea.
That'd be a great idea. So I'd like to introduce Keith O'Neil at the Columbia Council meeting a few minutes ago. We elected him to be part of the Board of Directors, so welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Josh was in the audience, too.
Next, we'll, we'll now move on to resident speak out. I'll call on you one by one in the order which you signed up. Individuals have three minutes for comment. Anyone representing an organization has five minutes. Following remarks, the board will have a chance to ask questions. Please mute your microphones when you're not speaking. So the first person in resident speak out is Lena Kennedy. Lena? Next is Sky Anderson. Sky?
Good evening. I'm Sky from Claris Forest, and I'd like to remind you of two procedures to shorten the meetings and decrease the need for the chair to use the gavel. Point of information and point of order. First, point of information. The December meeting devolved into not so much a meeting as a discussion, then a conversation, followed by, as some would say, an argument with interruptions, and then astonishingly, a catfight. Part of this was due to the use of point of information, or rather, its misuse. I counted about 12 times it was used, most of the time improperly. In comparison, point of information was used only three times in the past six months, also incorrectly. This allows the meeting to veer off rather than continue on in a straight line with only slight detours, thus making the meeting longer than necessary. According to Robert's Rules of Order, point of information can be called by anyone at any time. You may interrupt the speaker to ask a question, but not to insert your opinion or your facts, or to steer the conversation elsewhere. To make it easier to remember its purpose, point of information has recently been changed to question of information, but I don't see that catching on, just as other parliamentary quirks have not caught on, since either they are not useful or the status quo is too ingrained. Secondly, point of order. According to CA's resident speak out webpage, we need not speak on an agenda item unless the speaker is a non-resident. I quote, "Non-residents are asked to focus their comments on agenda items that relate to their participation with CA." In addition, we should be prepared for one minute of board clarifying questions. I quote, "Board members have an opportunity after each speaker to ask questions, which is limited to one minute. This does not mean additional time to proselytize or go off on a tangent, but only to succinctly address the question asked. Therefore, a resident's topic takes from three to six minutes, not 18, as in December. It would have been appropriate for a board member to interrupt with point of order. Lakey attempted to and was finally recognized. Point of order is directed to the chair in order, for example, to bring the meeting back to the topic at hand, to remind the chair he forgot something like asking a second to a motion or for other reasons of procedure." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan?
Sky, this is a great reminder, thank you, I appreciate it. I noticed some of those same things. We, we often are thinking about looking for a parliamentarian. You interested?
I, I don't think you want a parliamentarian. Oh, yeah, I can do that. The parliamentarian would sit next to the chair and would only speak when asked to, to clarify a point.
Brian?
I want to say to you, you do a great job at Hickory Ridge Board meetings, keeping on track. So it'd be a great idea to have someone to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca Bryant, representing the Oakland Mills Open Space Committee.
We were both speaking for the Oakland Mills Village Board. On the sign-up sheet, there wasn't any place to put two names. I'm Bill McCormack, Vice Chair of the Oakland Mills Village Board and Co-Chair of our Open Space Advisory Committee. When we saw the playground area discussion on the CA work session agenda, we scheduled an open space advisory committee meeting to perform a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the playground areas in Oakland Mills. Based on this analysis, we created a list of recommendations which our village board unanimously approved. Our board member, Rebecca Bryant, will present those recommendations.
I'm Rebecca Bryant, and I'm a resident of Oakland Mills. And I've got two little guys, well, not little guys, one of which is with me tonight. And they've had the benefit of getting to grow up with CA open space. So I have a lot of opinions about the totlots, and it's something very important to me. And it breaks my heart to squander the opportunity that totlot play spaces provide by putting cookie cutter playground equipment there at every single one that only applied to a very small age range. So I was really excited to work with Bill and the whole Open Space Advisory Committee on this. So the analysis that we came up with, Bill organized this into nice, in five nice points. So we want to, we encourage you to look at the land around the neighborhood centers for enhanced opportunities for socialization and recreation, encouraging the, the go-between of the play space and the nature area surrounding the play spaces. Create multi-generational opportunities. And to me, this is one of the most important, because right now the play spaces are geared towards two- to five-year-olds, even my guys who are seven and nine, you know, don't really care about them anymore. So right now, they're geared to a very small age range. And we have the opportunity to reach our aging population, as well as very kids of different ages, by creating more open play things that appeal to a wider range. Areas for frisbee tossing, more seating, so neighbors can get together and talk and visit more. Looking at them as a bigger opportunity instead of just for toddlers to come slide. We also think that the play spaces are crown jewels of neighborhoods and should be advertised and promoted as such. They should be, I mean, what other area besides Columbia has these play spaces at every, the end of every cul-de-sac? So we have such a jewel in that. And we should celebrate them more, creating an open space play day or something like that to encourage it. Also, the play spaces are a good location for environmentally friendly practices, whether it's rain gardens or pollinator gardens or other nature, blending the play space with nature more. And then finally, in order to create these dream goals, I guess, that we have, we think CA should work with Hoco by Design and create a comprehensive plan for addressing these play spaces. They're going to be different in every neighborhood and every location, and I think that's one of the best parts. Instead of having the same play space at the end of every block, we have the opportunity to have some real independent, working with the neighbors in the area to see what they need and, and with the different designs of the play spaces. So I think that.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, thank you very much. Every word, agree with, wonderful. When we were doing the six minutes totlot over in Hickory Ridge, that's one of the things that came up. There was two or three board members, we looked around the area. And there's so many opportunities, so I really want to appreciate you and Bill for doing this. Thank you very, very much.
Alan?
Yeah, a couple of questions. A wise person, I wish I knew who, probably many, have said that the answer to any question is always, any question of why not is always money. And so I'm wondering, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm really just trying to get some creative ideas here. You know, we have a budget. One of the rationales for the way that we're doing totlots right now is we can sort of control the budget. We're reducing the amount because it's not, the old structures were too expensive and so on. If what you're, and I, as with Brian, I love all your suggestions. If implementing the met more money needed to go to totlot slash playgrounds, we can only accomplish that by either raising the assessment or perhaps raising fees on other things that people pay for and then we get more money, or by cutting things. If it meant raising the assessment fee, and I'm not threatening that, but you know, that's really, we're in budget season, and that's really one of the things we have to think about. Would you, basically, would you be in favor of the entire community of Columbia paying more so that these things would, would exist in the way you're talking about?
Point of information.
You're not supposed to put in your own thoughts?
No, no, this is-
What's the point of information?
I'm wondering if you would think about having a third option?
That's for you to think, talk about.
The question is to the, yeah.
It's a very good question. My thought would be that you would phase things in over time as much as possible within existing budget, because there is a budget for open space. Playground areas to me are the totlots, grassy areas, the tables and benches, et cetera, so you get a multi-generational approach. And my thought would be, there might be an initial outlay if you went with a 50-year plan. And then after that, you could work within your existing budget as much as possible. There might need to be some additional expenditures. I would try to not raise the assessment fee overall. And that's why I'm thinking the 50-year plan to really try to bring that all together to make it happen.
Thank you, my second. Thank you, I'm sorry, don't mean to cut you off.
And I wouldn't assume that doing these kinds of things would cost more? Because I think part of the thing is that there are so many totlots now, and they don't all need to be that way. And something like a pollinator garden would be so much cheaper than having a totlot. So maybe, you know, not say every other one, but being able to allocate resources to more concentrated areas. So maybe one would be more expensive, but maybe another one would be less expensive.
Well, that's what I guess, thank you, that's what I guess. My second question was, I remember when I was a teacher back in Ann Arbor, we overlooked a park. And one of the favorite things that the kids played on were four unused sewer pipes placed in a, in a square that they could run around on and play barrel tag, they called it, and, and climb around on them, you know. I think they, they started to call them nature playgrounds, where you put logs and whatever. Is that something that you might see as a potential for some places?
Absolutely. There could be a lot of creativity. And also, if you consulted with consultants at Hoco by Design, which I participated in a lot and was very happy with, having done the, been Co-Chair of the House, an opportunity to smash the plan and work with those consultants, and I'll just leave it at that, that there is an opportunity here for educating people on what works elsewhere in the country. And it might lead to a reconfiguration of the playground areas and their locations. Right now in Oakland Mills, I think we have 18 or 19, as we call them totlots. We might be able to condense those down into maybe 10 or 12 playground areas that are bigger so that you might wind up actually using less equipment or getting used more often than totlots that only have one piece of equipment now because of safety fall zones and they're not used. So those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Ginny?
Real quick, we just went to an amazing playground last summer. Big play structure, typical play structure that you would imagine. Very few kids on it. Two big log-like things on the side of it, all the kids climbing all over them, so absolutely.
The box and the gift.
Ginny?
Yes, exactly.
I think a couple of years ago, Oakland Mills had volunteered to be a pilot for the totlot policy and to look at it. And Dennis did an excellent job and his people, I think, were doing a proposal for Oakland Mills, including really cameras on the totlots, how, how well they were being used or not being used, et cetera. And at that time, you and the neighbors volunteered to really turn one totlot that was in really a bad location and very tiny and, you know, certain amount of crime going on, into something else. So you were willing to give that up with the idea being perhaps at the neighborhood centers or someplace else, you would have a, a larger play area that could be multi-generational, as you, as you say. So would Oakland Mills be challenged to be willing to be a pilot again to try and show that you don't have to just look at the whole thing in a rigid way and, and assume that everything will be there, especially now with Blandair Park? Schools have play areas, which is actually well done in this report, Dennis. So would you be willing to be, I don't know if the board would accept that, but a guinea pig for this whole project? And also the idea of finding out, I don't know about Howard County by design, but other areas that might have very innovative, creative play areas that the kids, and your son's sitting there, maybe he has a good idea, maybe there should be some kids on this committee.
My thought would be that it would be a community involvement-driven process. And that would be very important. And the last line on the fifth recommendation is pilot these ideas in Oakland Mills. And this has been approved by Oakland Mills Village Board.
Will you be sending that to us?
Bill?
Well, I'll include that if they didn't hear it. Alan asked, will you be sending us the results of what you have?
If you can send that, if you can forward the testimony of the board.
The, the whole SWOT analysis and everything?
Yes.
Yes, we'll send, we'll get that to all the members of the village board. We'll give you the whole package we sent to our village board. Just on to my question really quickly. First, kudos to Ginny for, I think, the longest question, wind up by percolating. It's awesome. Secondly, in your analysis, did you do any kind of normalizing towards single-family versus multifamily homes and proximity and number of totlots that were accessible for people in single-family versus multifamily? And how that balances out in the neighborhood as far as amenities?
That's an excellent observation. We didn't get into that level of specificity and detail, but that would be something to be looked at. And I know with the open space areas in the Hoco by Design, that they looked a lot at that. And I think we could profit a lot from that as that draft ultimately becomes a file.
Thank you. Keith?
Just a quick question. In the analysis, did you, in the analysis, did you survey any of the residents? Having been in, I, I love the totlots and I have four kids who spend a lot of time. So one of the challenges that we've run into is when we try to expand some of the activity that's happening in some of the open space, there are residents who don't necessarily want it to change. Has that been addressed at all or, or questions asked?
Not in this SWOT analysis. We felt that something like that could be taken care of in, if we went to putting together a 50-year plan, that would certainly be something we looked at. We did a few years ago on one totlot, got into that with all the surrounding abutting neighbors and did door-to-door research. And you'll get into, some people don't want change, some do. I think what is important is that you get consultant involved and CA and have a community-driven process to bring all of that out and help with CA, have help from CA and the consultant to make sense of all of that. And then when there's, from the consultants, what works best elsewhere, I think educates the residents so that there's kind of a, ah, oh, okay. As we got into that in communication with the residents around this one totlot in Oakland Mills, there was an educational process, too.
Thank you.
Excellent question.
I've got one question. So I've, I've got a four-year-old who reminds me day after day that he may be four, but he's going to grow up and I can't stop him. So the question I have is, have you looked at examples for play areas that'll appeal to four-year-olds? And as they get older, to elementary school kids and, and older kids and even adults? Have you looked at different types of examples that'll appeal to different age ranges?
I have a whole Pinterest board I can share with you.
That'd be great.
Know what Pinterest is?
Vaguely know what Pinterest is.
You know, I've worked the last four years for Rackham Parks. I do before and after-school care at Gorman Crossing Elementary School. And in August, September, where they put in a whole new play area, they got rid of all the landscape ties, mulch, all the equipment. Put in blacktop, six-inch padded rubber flooring for the whole playground area, lots of different playground equipment. One of the specialties that our group came up with is a spider web. And then the example we had, it was vertical. At Gorman Crossing, it's horizontal. And while kids at Gorman Crossing play all the playground equipment, the basketball hoop's on the blacktop, and then they go out in the grassy areas to throw the football around, kick the soccer ball around. And then there's a grassy hill they climb. So they're all over the place, boys and girls, kindergarten through fifth grade, doing a lot of things. They're very active, that's the key thing. And I'm sure that as we, if we got into it, we could come up with people who have a lot of more professional backgrounds in the areas of these questions that could help CA and the community ferret out those good answers and come up with a, a good guideline. And Dennis and these people back when we did the totlot, they're great baseline analysis. And then the next steps that we didn't get to were to come up with recommendations, et cetera.
Yeah, if you can forward some of those examples, that'd be, that'd be really helpful.
And that's the beauty of unstructured play areas, right? Because structured play areas, there's one way to do it, so it's one age that can do it. But unstructured play allows for all different ages, whatever your development level, there's a way that you can interact with whatever it is.
Good point.
Thank you. Good point, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll get emailed the whole package to all of you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you. Next, we have Dara Baker. Dara?
Hi, everyone. Happy Thursday. Welcome to the new board members. Happy to be here today. So short presentation today, following up on our, the presentation from CBF and the information from him about the issues with the proposed project from nuts to bolts, from funding to completion. I wanted to sort of add on to something that the previous community member said. You know, those of us who've been talking about the Lake Elkhorn project for the last year and change really do want exactly the same thing. We want a reasonable, community-driven project, process where those of us who have been spending the last year and a half becoming pretty well-informed about stream restoration, stream reengineering, upland storm water management, and the funding and regulation processes, would really just like this process to have taken that into account. Really, CA should be working and focused on working with Howard County, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, Columbia Villages in Maryland to increase storm water management projects, shift to permeable surfaces, rethinking the mowing and management of pathways, particularly planting of trees and the support for existing impossible-to-replace environments, all of the trees, the flora and the fauna, and in, by increasing invasive species management. We need to invest and, you know, consider alternatives, ensure that development and new construction or renovations take into consideration stormwater needs. And since so many CA residents live so close to their streams, I'd also like to see an end to CA granting easements without input and consent from residents living within 20 feet of any planned construction. And all future votes on easement should ensure the most protections for CA and CA, CA residents and property. All future stream-related projects must inform all residents, not the bare minimum required by law. You know, in the past 15 months, you know, my experience with CA staff to get the best interest of every affected resident, I don't feel like I'm being considered. I know that there was a question asked a couple of meetings ago that the General Counsel looked into what kind of authority still existed for the CA board related to the easement, you know, if there were more protections that could be put in, sort of exactly what the board could do to protect us, and I have not heard anything. I'd also like to sort of speak to something that Dennis Mattie said where there, apparently there is, you know, we've been asking for close to a year. I know that Ginny has asked, I know that other board members have asked about CA input and spaces. This is the first that I've heard. I actually recently read the addendum. And if you read the addendum, yes, it is, but there's actually a pocket veto for WSSI in there that says that if the CA board doesn't approve it within 10 days, it's considered approved. So I'd like to see how that would work, especially with the way that this board works where it's basically at least a month's cycle in order to get things onto the record. So, thank you.
Alan?
Dara, thank you. Could you just, that last point you made about this pocket veto, this is the first I've heard of it. I don't want a long explanation, but swear with this tongue to play.
So the amendment to the contract that was signed in 2021 in Article 1, Phase 1, 1.1 states, "All plans for Phase 1 are subject to CA's approval, which shall not be unreasonably withheld, provided CA's approval of Phase 1 plans should be provided, if not given, within 10 business days of receipt of the Phase 1 plans. And any CA approval shall not in WSSI's reasonable discretion material and adversely- not in WSSI's reasonable discretion material and adversely hinder WSSI's ability to generate environmental credits." So that's sort of 10 days after they submit it, that's not a lot of time for you, for anyone to do a full review of anything on the scale that they're proposing for any of the phases in the project.
Thank you.
Ginny?
Could you please send us your testimony in writing?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Next, we have Joan Lankos.
I'm Joan Lankos. I have permission from former CA board member Janet Evans to share her resignation letter that you already received. I am resigning from the Columbia Association Board of Directors effective immediately due to the majority of this board's lack of accountability for their role in arriving at where we are now. I do not think our current outcome was inevitable. This is a failure that could have been managed if the majority of this board had chosen to do so and the board leadership had been in place to support it. Outside legal counsel has been used in lieu of actual decision-making or problem-solving. This lack of leadership, accountability, and transparency have rendered the board, at best, impotent, and at worst, a risk for the community and the organization. My input has been routinely ignored, which is not unexpected, but I don't expect the same level of unresponsiveness within the organization and with the community on important topics. The inability of this board to communicate at a minimum to, if not with, the president and CEO in an actionable way and to the community around what the issues are and what steps have been taken towards resolution is irresponsible. I no longer choose to be a part of the board that has squandered months of time and thousands of lean payer dollars without full board approval nor any real plan or effort to shift the dynamic. In almost nine months, the CA board has accomplished no positive forward movement. We have not created strategic goals to align with and make progress towards the five-year strategic plan. We have not had a conversation as a board to discuss our aspirations for Columbia. We have not initiated action or made a plan to work through differences, and there have been no proactive efforts from board leadership to encourage any real resolution. There have been no consultation or collaboration with the full board to try and find a way forward. The chair and vice chair alone have discussed scope with outside counsel, which has expanded beyond what was discussed with the full board. That lack of transparency and latitude to ignore what was agreed upon have served to undermine the board and the overall organization. I have watched topics raised then ignored and petty grievances blown out of proportion. I have seen conflicts of interest downplayed and board discussion contorted and used as an excuse to make bad decisions. I have listened to policies being dissected and then recreated out of context to be used to justify behavior. As a CA board member, I had hoped that I could be part of something that celebrates and upholds all that Columbia and CA stand for. That has not been the case. At this time, I do not want to be associated with this board. I do not trust its leadership, and the opportunity to achieve a positive outcome has passed. This board has done a disservice to the community by not making a concerted effort to resolve the internal conflict, and now the cost to the community is even higher. I believe that my time invested in this board could be more productively invested in an alternate civic engagement. Again, those were the words of Janet Evans to this board when she tendered her resignation.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Boys, representing Protector Streams. Sharon? Sharon, are you out there?
I'm here. Yep, I'm here. Sorry, I'm trying to get my camera. I apologize. Here I am. Good evening. I want to thank this volunteer group of elected and appointed representatives for your time and hard work and commitment to our community. Due to everything we have learned regarding the Lake Elkhorn project, including most recently that WSSI will be submitting their plans in March, I am asking you to please amend the agenda to add a vote onto the agenda at the next meeting on February 23 to rescind the decision for the Lake Elkhorn project and terminate the easement. There's been ample time to review the documents, and CA told you there isn't out. A reminder, once a permit has been issued, there will be no turning back. You must stop this now. One thing we keep hearing is this board unanimously voted for the project. This is simply not true. An uninformed board voted for an easement to determine the feasibility of a proposal by a private for-profit contractor. There is no way they voted for this project because to this day they haven't been shown the actual plan, and per the flow chart, there was no intention by CA to ever share it with the board. That inaccurate statement suggests the board just signed a blank slate for 133 acres of land. That is ludicrous. The board has an obligation to protect our open space from known harm. It's impossible to suggest what was proposed to CA could be considered protection. This project is in violation of CA's watershed management plan, and the policy is in place to implement that plan. We know this project does not address where the rain falls in the watershed with best management practices that mitigate the root cause of the situation, the upland stormwater runoff. We know from Wild Lake, there is no proof this will reduce the need for dredging, nor have we seen any trade-offs in Longfellow that were worth the tremendous losses. The following is just a sampling from CA's 2009 Watershed Protection Framework and Policies. CA employees and consultants will ensure their actions and activities do not cause or significantly contribute to water quality degradation, accelerated erosion, or loss of wildlife habitat. CA employees, all eyes on you. CA will include the cost of monitoring and maintenance when estimating the cost of a watershed project. Question: Did CA estimate 50K for Longfellow's free work only to end up with the extremely disappointing results and the need to dredge Wild Lake two years after the stream restoration? CA will develop track and publish results of a set of performance measures that will indicate the effectiveness of CA's watershed protection program. This information, along with the condition of Columbia's lakes and rivers, will be distributed, published, and posted no less than annually. Question: Where can I find the results from the Lake Elkhorn and Wild Lake watersheds for the past 10 years? This document actually begins with, quote, "Columbia, Maryland was planned and developed with healthy lakes, ponds, rivers, and streams, as well as wooded areas and other natural environments in mind. Our plentiful and easily accessible lakes, ponds, and streams and natural areas make Columbia unique, attractive to residents and visitors, and underlay and support private and community property values. Columbia residents have a strong longstanding connection to these waters and have repeatedly demonstrated a willingness to invest in their restoration, integrity, and health," end quote. What residents really think restorations begin by bulldozing the forest down? That's called a demolition, and this practice has no business in our community. As we have observed for ourselves in Longfellow, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation has said the Elkhorn Branch Stream would be better off if we did nothing to it. Nothing to it than the restoration. Think about that. Why does CA continue to want this project to happen so badly? They've already sold, have they already sold our forested stream corridor to an out-of-straight tree removal company? Armature neighborhood forests do not belong stacked on the backs of log trucks, and we do not want to see our natural biodiverse, full-of-life streams and riparian zones converted into stormwater management facilities. We live here. We pay CA salaries, and it's time for the CA employees to listen to what the community has repeatedly stated it wants from you. I am asking for this board to please step up tonight for our open space and forested stream valleys and for all current and future generations of people and animals who live here and add a vote to the next meeting's agenda to terminate this project once and for all. Please, please protect our, preserve our ponds and forests and streams. Thank you for your immediate consideration."
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Alan?
Quick question. I had heard that in March, WSSI was going to respond, answer the questions that the government put to them. I heard you say that in March, they were going to put forward their plan. Is it your understanding they're going to do both, or do you have any knowledge of which they're going to do?
It's my understanding that they're going to be submitting in March. So maybe I should take back my words about plan and try to get clarification, but my understanding is that the responses and the plans will go together.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, they'll submit it. It will be reviewed and then, to the best of my knowledge, submitted to CA and the watershed advisory committee per the flow chart.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. Next, we have.
Thank you.
Amy Bennett. Amy? I think she's also virtual. Amy, are you out there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, welcome, Mr. Odeill. Thank you so much for stepping up. The Columbia Association Board is extremely important. My name is Amy Bennett, and I have lived in Columbia since its inception and for the last 30-plus years in the village of Longreach. I'm here tonight to make some comments about the Lake Elkhorn project and process. As a Longreach resident, I stand before you with no more information today than I had in August of 2021 on what CS, CA, and WSSI are going to do with our beautiful Longreach environment. I learned the end of last week directly from WSSI that they are planning to submit their revised proposal in March. That revised, this, the revised proposal is a response to the questions that were put to, to WSSI and CA back in February and April, I think. I asked Dennis, oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. I have been told by both WSSI and Dennis that the community will not see the proposal until it is submitted. I'm assuming that means that the board will not see it. I asked Dennis directly two things related to the proposal. He said he had not seen the proposal. That troubles me greatly. I wonder if he was parsing words, and by that I simply mean that maybe he has been briefed on various parts of the proposal, the revised proposal, but maybe he hasn't seen the entire proposal. Please tell me who is overseeing proposed work on CA land. I asked specifically, how many trees are coming down, Dennis? If it's not up to 65 acres, which is in the original proposal, is it 50 acres? Is it 40 acres? Is it 30 acres? Is it five acres? We, the residents, want to know. I also asked Dennis if Reach 1 was removed as requested by MDE. I hope you all remember, MDE requested the removal of Reach 1. He said he didn't know. I hope at a minimum all board members would support MDE's request to remove Reach 1 as it is too constricted to work in. I have to move on. I want to raise one other issue with the board that related to the renovation of Stone House, which has been in the works for two years. I recently attended a Longreach boarding, board meeting in which the board was informed that the renovation due to start in two weeks would be postponed by one year. I again talked to Dennis, who explained to me that the renovation was due to start in April. Both of these things are true. The reality was that in order for the renovation to begin in April, staff had to prepare, and that was to start February 1. So let's stop parsing words and stay with the facts. As this board's term comes to an end.
Can you please wrap up?
Enormous gratitude to those who have worked so hard to listen to all residents and fight for Columbia that truly represents best environmental practices.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Tina Horn.
I think I would like to start with an apology. I have sat here for a number of meetings while I was on the board and during, since I have come off of the board, and I really think that the community as a whole owes the CA staff an apology. And I heard it again just minutes ago, repeated little nasty insinuations that you guys are clearly out to do horrible things to the community when nothing could be further from the truth. So I'm really sorry. That's bullshit, and I know it, and we all know it too. I was here going to talk about grant-making processes because there are, in the nonprofit world, best practices recommended for boards who do make grants and boards who lead organizations who make grants, and I'm wondering, of the 11 best practices that I found, which ones this board has been involved with? Number one, understand your mission and vision. I'll give you that one. Or at least many folks do quote the mission, and it's there on the wall, so I'm hoping that helps. Number two, assess your capacity to accomplish your mission. No, not even a little bit. Determine your funding focus. I will also give us that one here in Columbia because we tend to focus in Columbia. Determine how to find, this is number four, so you're two for four so far, batting 500, which if you were baseball players would be fabulous. Determine how you're going to find the organizations to fund. Nope. Create grant strategies. Oh, golly. No, I'm sorry. I have seen none of that. Develop grant guidelines is number six. Again, no. Get the word out. No. Design a process for proposal review. No. Create a process for board review and decision-making. No. Award grants. Okay, I'll give you that one. Apparently someone submits a demand letter and they get grant funding, except not everybody who submits a demand letter gets grant funding. Create grant reporting requirements. No. So you're three for 11. Although I will note, when we were discussing this last year, that staff had made significant recommendations to follow the existing policies that the organization apparently put in place, and those were also routinely tossed out the window. I am deeply concerned that the organization's credibility in this manner as well continues to be risked by poor decisions and poor practices that this board is leading, apparently blithely, with great glee and joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, you said that the policies that we had previously approved were tossed out the window.
Yeah. Susan had asked, I remember, Susan, if I quote you, tell me if I'm saying anything wrong, that the grant funding that had been reapproved did not run through any of the processes. There was no funding notification made. There were no grant requests solicited from the community at large. So none of those processes were followed, and then the one organization that did receive funding was asked to provide reports and other documentation, including audited financials, and those took quite a bit of time and wrangling, I understand, to get submitted.
Heidi?
Heidi, could you send us a copy of your testimony?
I'd be happy to. I've got an article that I found with those best practices. Happy to send that. Thank you.
Ginny?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Ginny.
Welcome back again.
Thank you.
You are aware that we did pass a Columbia Association Grant Application Policy and that number?
Yes, and I'm also unaware that it was followed in the last two fiscal years.
Number two on there is a community grant category two, Columbia Community Foundation, a grant to the Community Foundation of Howard County to be used in turn by the foundation to make grants to entities selected by the foundation, and there would be a member of the staff on that committee, and that actually happened in practice.
When? How long ago?
Before COVID.
So three or four years ago?
Ms. Miller was on it.
Not recently then.
Well, in COVID, we weren't giving any grants.
Right, but we started up since then, haven't we?
They applied for a grant.
Who did?
This year.
The foundation?
Yes.
Was there an announcement made using these policies this year?
Well, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say to you is the purpose of that was instead of a lot of little grants where the board.
I know how an interim funder works. I'm very familiar with how an interim funder works. Was that organization funded this year?
I'd like to see it funded, but.
That's not what I asked.
The budget has not been approved yet.
Budget's February 23.
Any further questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Bruning.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone, I'm Kevin Bruning. Tonight, I am speaking as an individual. I am a resident of River Hill, and I think the best of Columbia and Columbia Association is ahead of us. I think it's time to move forward and find out where we can make the community improve and find the best solutions to make our community better. Tonight, I wanted to speak on what's known as the maker culture, and that is that there's been much talk in Columbia about how CA can help artists, artisans, and craftspeople. This community is a diverse and intellectual culture that offers differing views of the world, and art is a civil and positive expression of that intellect. I believe that an unmet need in Columbia is to provide membership in what would be known as maker spaces. These facilities are ones that provide membership to access where members can use Autodesk, high-quality 3D printers, lathes, CNC machines, woodworking equipment, et cetera. Often, maker spaces provide members Often, maker spaces provide members with the opportunity to rent space to store materials, which is another way to offset membership costs. Maker spaces also operate as a business, offer classes at a cost ranging from basic, well, at a cost, with classes teaching, for instance, basic woodworking, to robotics, to CAD programming. Reservations for these machines are made online so people can plan out their day without having to wait for a machine or a computer. Does CA physical plant ever need a part ASAP? Well, now you have the ability to print a part instead of waiting for a costly delivery or for that hard-to-find part that you just can't find. Does CA need to make custom signs? I remember reading about how expensive the signs were to replace on the bridges, and I thought that was a little bit over the top. So why not print them at your maker space? There are millions of templates, for instance, for 3D printing, and CA could provide a membership for that. I think what this does is it gives younger people that are in high school or in college that have ideas to actually realize those ideas and have some self-actualization as a result.
Thank you. Alan?
Interesting ideas. I'm wondering, do you have any knowledge that would help us around a business plan? Do you think that there could be a business plan created, given the realities of Columbia and Columbia Association, that would make this pay for itself? Or would you see this as something that you think the residents, through their assessment, should all help to pay for?
I mean, I think that it would all depend upon, I think there have to be some analysis, but there are a number of existing maker spaces, globally speaking, that have been successful with this membership model. There have been several here in the United States. I'd be happy to provide some research as to, for instance, their member numbers, their market in terms of their exposure to a certain area, geographic area, where they would seek members. You know, I see, for instance, just to add to some things that I said a minute ago, people go onto YouTube all the time, right? And they say, these things are great. Jesus, if I only had a CNC machine, or if I have a real interest in woodworking. But there's literally no club for woodworking in Columbia. There is one, but they're not very active. There's no, I called them up, and I said, I want to join, and they said, well, it's like once-a-month thing. So I think this would be truly a, an opportunity for CA to provide a new type of membership that appeals to artists, artisans, craftspeople, and I believe it's something that's missing.
Thank you. Jenny?
There used to be a very active woodworking group years ago that met at the Florence Bane Center. That's no longer, and they had all the, you know, equipment, et cetera, that no longer is in existence. John Maitland headed it up.
Right. I called the Columbia Woodworking Group a couple months back, and they didn't seem like they were very active. I mean, they may still have that facility.
Florence Bane Center--
Okay.
In Harper's Choice, yeah. No, it's a great idea.
Dick?
Thank you.
This is a fascinating idea, and have you really fleshed out how this would be done, or is this just a first stab at it? Like, where would this be done, and how would it be set up, that sort of thing?
I mean, it would certainly need to be in a space that's large enough to warehouse these pieces of equipment, which can be fairly large. In something that was known as Tech Shop that existed in Arlington a number of years back, they actually had a bank of computers, and so this is really more of a introduction, I think, for me to provide some thoughts to the board and just some food for thought, I guess, to think about how we can, how we can help this maker community.
Well, have you talked to the county at all? Because they do have facilities like schools and libraries and things where you could set up something like this.
Yeah, I think there is the, like, incubator, a business incubator, but it seems like that's, you have to have business membership, and it's, that's something to look at that might be an alternative.
Well, I lived in a community once that had a workshop that was a community woodworking shop, and I think it was run by the library system, actually. But it got a lot of business. I think this is interesting. I'd like to get more ideas from you on how we could set something like this up, and some kind of a business model would be helpful.
Of course, of course. And I also think to add to funding, our last speaker made a good point, which is if we're helping artists, we're helping artisans, then maybe an opportunity to find grants, to fund something like this where you have cutting-edge--
Those are our corporate structure. We can't find grants, so it might be something--
Didn't realize that.
Something a little different. I'm wondering, from what you've been saying, it sounds like this would be something we'd set up like a gym or a tennis facility or something like that.
That was my vision.
Any further questions?
No.
Then?
Yeah. I know a few years ago, one of my neighbors used to teach, used to deal with robotics at Wild Lake High School. It was a very active club with that. Again, I remember a large event, like, you know, involving that at APL, so there's a possibility, I think, for a lot of connections within the community from people who are already involved in this and, you know, would like to expand it.
I agree. I mean, I almost think it's somewhat of a, like, a co-curricular concept where individuals in the community are learning about different things that they have an interest in, but then they're choosing to learn that on their own and expanding their knowledge, whether it's APL or at a CA facility such as this or something like that, and getting the education community to possibly make recommendations to kids, to say, this might be an opportunity to learn more about this. You should look at CA's Tech Shop, if you will. That would be, that might be a good segue for those kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joel Horwitz. Joel, are you out there?
Hi.
Hi.
Evening.
You can hear me.
Joel Horwitz, I live in Harper's Choice, speaking for myself this evening. First of all, the Delegation Bill seventeen-twenty-three on voting rights for Columbia, I don't think it was well-vetted. It was only publicized on their website about a week ago. I have many concerns, issued questions, and how to deal with the practicalities and unintended consequences, and I'm not even sure it does what the sponsors wanted to do. So if anybody else has concerns, would you like to deep dive into property rights? No.
Can you speak a little louder?
I share the concerns with the previous speakers about the totlods. I would like to have a mix of things. Why can't we have pipes and stumps, as they do at Robinson Nature Center and Oakland Mills Interstate Center? Also, you should revisit the sponsorship issue. I don't know why that's a problem. We need friends of Columbia, and in lieu of that, sponsorships, and get to the next part, but I guess also mention the acre space. I've also considered whether the county could have an art reuse place also for teacher supplies, which there are a couple in North Carolina that I'm familiar with. In lieu of friends of, we have basically the Inner Arbor, which was set up to deal with the 501(c)(3) because of the 501(c)(4) issues. I find it backwards. It's just still supporting all these 501(c)(3)'s and the 501(c)(4). It should be the other way around. The Inner Arbor, though, doesn't seem to be doing enough to get donation. When I look at other 501(c)(3)'s websites, like the Bright Minds Foundation, they have click-on things for the estate plans, donate stock, donor-advised funds, IRA money. The Conservancy also has plan-giving and donating our vehicles. Community Ecology Institute has donations of stock. Friends and Foundation of the Library is trying to raise a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from their evening in the stacks to benefit the Battle of the Books, the fifth graders at Merriweather Post Pavilion. How are they able to do that, and we can't get a hundred thousand dollars for the Inner Arbor? And they have the Quests and states and IRA as well. The Community College Foundation has assets of over fifteen million dollars and raised two-point-three-eight million, exceeding their goal of one-point-five. If we could just raise a hundred thousand dollars, you could deal with your problems with the totlods, the neighborhood centers that we discussed a few years ago, or the totlods, or the pools, and all these other things, if just one or two people donated a hundred thousand dollars every year. And lastly, Friends of Patterson Park is supporting a government-owned park, and we have it backwards in this county. They also had--
Can you please make a closing statement?
Village vehicles, stock, and plan-giving, but they have a store, and we have an architecturally unique structure there, Chris List. Why aren't we promoting it more with things and shirts and--
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Andy?
Joel, could you send us a copy of your testimony? I wasn't able to get all of it. Thank you.
Bill?
Joel, I was just wondering, how many people do you know that are willing to just write checks for a hundred thousand dollars? I think that's a great idea. If they're readily at hand.
I'm tired of hearing about all these people who stand up. I've lived in Columbia since nineteen-sixty, whatever. They're in their eighties or nineties. Why are none of these people, if they like Columbia so much, they can't put a portion of their estate plan to go to these things? As I said, one or two people at a hundred thousand dollars would close the gap that's on the, in your packet for a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars as a whole for the Inner Arbor.
All right. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. Next, we have Michael Glibbersek.
Glibbersek, man. Three weeks-- I'll get it right eventually. All right. First, I'd like to recommend that you approve the capital project renovations at Lake Elkhorn. The piers need a lot of work. The woods warped. I fear splinters and trips every time my kids run onto them, so I think that'd be a good investment, so please approve that. Second, I'd like to ask the board that you be more candid and transparent about the decisions you're making on behalf of the community. Just be more forthright about the information you have, and you don't have, the processes you're using, the decisions you're considering, and why you think those decisions are in the best interest of the community. I don't know why you're not being candid, but it's obvious that you aren't. The most blatant example, but not the only most blatant, was the press release you issued a few weeks ago where you claimed that there were false rumors circulating about Lakey's job security. It was obviously dishonest at the time, and then less than two weeks later, Lakey departed, demonstrating that was just ridiculous statement to make. Your transparency issues aren't just limited to the issue around Lakey's departure, and you guys kind of ruined my testimony because what I was saying here is, for example, your approach to the Lake Elkhorn stream restoration has been nonsensical. You were adding stuff to the agenda at the last second. I have no idea what decision you're actually trying to debate on this project. I understand what Sharon and Dara, I understand what they want you to do, but I have no idea what the board is actually considering, and it's impossible for other people to come in and provide a meaningful input to the process you're trying to make, because I have no idea what you're considering. And, you know, I don't want to offend Sharon and Dara, but some, because I really appreciate their passion for open space. It's something I share, but I just can't debate every single thing they say. I want to know what you guys are thinking, and I don't have a clue, and tonight you demonstrated again, just adding stuff willy-nilly to the agenda at the last second. Couple weeks ago, you debated a few resolutions. I think there were three of them, but there were five on the packet online. No, nobody could have followed what you were actually discussing, so please kind of get your act together on that. And if you're saying that, you know, it's not me doing this, it's like, you know, it's different people on the board that are doing this, that distinction's lost on pretty much everyone in Columbia. Like, you guys look bad as a group. It's not just one person doing this or another person. Like, that's lost on everyone. So please, be more transparent. It's just going to require more discipline on your part. Finally, kind of echoing something Tina said, I'd really just like to compliment CA's staff. I don't interact with the majority of the staff by any means, but over the last eighteen months or so, the interactions have been overwhelmingly positive, whether it's Tony, who's Owen Brown's foreman, the kids, the staff at Kidspace, Jan and Nick helping out with landscaping at Lake Elkhorn, John McCoy coming out to our village and giving us a really detailed explanation of the stream restoration project, how much easier it's been to understand the budget the past couple of years, Wes's willingness to engage with our village on covenants. It's been a great experience the last eighteen months or so, and I really hope that you make sure the new CEO and the general counsel carry that momentum forward, but more importantly, I just want to make the staff know, like, there's mess going on above you, but people in the community really appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Next, we have Colin Sullivan.
Good evening. I'm Colin Sullivan, and I'm a resident of Town Center. I am a product of Columbia. I am who I am because of this community. This is a place where our community's values are so deeply ingrained with our community's identity. Like many of our neighbors, it is because of those attributes alone that I cannot imagine living anywhere else. Tonight, I want to share my observations that this board has violated and assaulted our community's values. Columbia was founded on a promise: new ideals, values, and a forward-looking vision for the future, the next America. Lakey Boyd led this organization to carry out and fulfill that vision. She was a beacon for inclusion and fostering a community where everyone could live together and enjoy the benefits of good planning and good intentions. Yet, for issues to be discussed only behind closed doors, or personal vendettas against Lakey from the board's senior leadership, and a fear and cowardice from other board members, Lakey was wrongfully dismissed, and at what cost to our neighbors. This board is a stain on our community, and the lack of shame this board feels is damning. In this moment, it is embarrassing to live in Columbia because of this board's actions. Neighbors, family, friend, colleagues, all ask me, what is going on in Columbia? Why has the CA's popular president, who has definitively stood up for equity and inclusion, been abruptly fired? Why has CA's chief counsel resigned? Why have so many CA board members resigned? Why are the chair and vice chair still in control after the exposure of their closed-door meetings and schemes to oust this successful and admired president? This board has hurt Columbia and wasted our money because you do not care about your neighbors and the residents that speak in front of you. You have made Columbia a fraud. How can we be a community of our values when our leaders on this board of directors have none? So much damage has been done, and I fear that with the members of this board retaining their power, the havoc you wreak on our community will continue. You all should deeply reconsider your involvement in Columbia. If this board can do anything right, do not make any final decision for a permanent successor to Lakey. You all were either voted by a minimal voting populace, or you were not elected at all. Board members, you are not special, and you cannot adequately represent all of Columbia. We need community conversations and input, real dialogue, and democratic participation. We do not need this board. I'll conclude my remarks with one of Jim Rouse's simplest yet most profound quotes: "Whatever ought to be, can be." We cannot be the community that ought to be with this board. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Vaughn. Ashley, are you out there?
Yep, I'm online. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Great. Yes?
Yep, yep, yep.
Wait, my time has already started. Can you start that over? I was confirming you could hear me.
We can hear you.
Great, thanks. All right. Good evening. I'm Ashley Vaughn, a resident of Harper's Choice and a former member of the CA Board of Directors. I was appointed in 2021 when Allen Klein was removed by the CA Board, not Lakey, for unethical conduct. In the interest of transparency, I will note that I ran against Allen in the 2022 village elections, which he won by two votes. I am here tonight to emphasize the significance of Speak Out. While I have many comments, I'm referencing the CA Board, I want to clarify that Janet, Andy, and Bill have been the exception, and I am grateful for their leadership. In the past six months, Speak Out has become a vital platform for community expression. It has attracted a diverse range of participants from every part of our community, including Columbia villages, other Howard County communities, people of all ages-- people of all ages, races, ethnicities, professions, and organizations. It could be said that Speak Out represents the community as a whole, unlike the CA Board of Directors, which has been predominantly made up of white retirees for years. Speak Out has been especially effective in bringing together respected civic and community leaders, some representing marginalized groups, and others representing those in positions of power and influence. At first, many Speak Out participants came to defend CA President Lakey Boyd. They praised her accomplishments, big and small, and the message could not have been missed by the CA Board. The community embraced Lakey and enthusiastically supported her leadership. Unfortunately, the CA Board chose not to even acknowledge those speakers most of the time. Allen questioned the need for this defense despite being privately engaged in efforts to undermine Lakey and her staff. If you watch the recordings of prior meetings, it's clear the frustration of Speak Out participants has grown. This cannot be pleasant for the board members nor for many others in the room. It has become clear, though, Speak Out is no longer about the CA Board. The community has realized that the board has not listened to or acknowledged a single person who has spoken out against them. The board spends hours on single issues, micromanaging stream water management, but ignores the outpouring of support for Lakey and her staff. The board's behavior suggests a lack of accountability and disregard for the community's concerns. Speak Out has become a way for the community to support the CA staff, which has lost an admired leader and had its organization thrown into upheaval for no substantial reason. The board's unprofessional treatment of Lakey Boyd, Susan Crabby, and Wes Anetton refills their biases. White men in these positions would not have been treated in the same manner. The community wants the staff to know that they understand their situation. Speak Out is now about speaking to and for the many people who will never stand up at a public meeting but are concerned about the damage being done to this organization and the undermining of our community values. Speak Out is about speaking to whatever media is listening, and Speak Out is about seeking your potential replacements. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you. That concludes the resident's Speak Out for tonight's work session. To limit interruptions during board discussion, all members of the general public will now be returned to the audience. This means you will no longer be able to show your camera or unmute your audio, but you're more than welcome to stay as an attendee and watch the remainder of the session. You can also watch a live stream on the CA livestream YouTube page. Thank you for your participation tonight. I'll now take a moment to allow staff to make this transition. Do we want a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Yeah, five-minute recess. Please reconvene at in five minutes. At 8:21. The 2024 budgets. So I know last time we sort of had to, due to time constraints, sort of had to rush through your presentation to the boards. Some would like to give you the opportunity to present any details that you feel the board needs to understand.
So I assumed that that presentation was completed. What we do have is, so we received, I think, I don't know, 19 budget questions today. We're prepared, I'm prepared to run through those questions and answers.
That'd be great. And before we begin, what I'd like to say, the goal for this particular agenda item is try to formulate motions that we can vote on at the next meeting. So if we need to make adjustments, think about what motions that we would want to vote on for the next meeting so that those motions can be publicized ahead of time and that we know exactly what we'll be voting on ahead of time.
And just to keep in mind, so you have two weeks before you vote, and so that you have a week before that material would need to be posted, right?
So the goal is to try to get some agreement on the motions, not necessarily whether you're for or against them, but the general wording of the motions tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just go in the order that the questions were listed. First question about the Arts Center. Will the $1.3 million be allocated and renovations completed entirely in FY '24? Dennis, straighten me out if I'm wrong, but the renovations, no, would not be completed entirely in FY '24. But it's my understanding that we do need the full amount in order to get under contract for that, right?
That's correct.
And that is especially because there are long lead time items. It's mostly for electrical panels and related equipment. And in order to put in those orders, we'd have to be under contract. In order to go under contract, we need the full amount approved. Are expenses?
Oh.
Hi. Okay.
Okay. This is, you just, $1.3 million is just for the Arts Center?
Right.
Right. Okay, Stone House would be different.
Was previously, was approved in a previous budget.
Yeah, okay. And the $1.3 million, think, will cover it?
There'll be a supplemental request in FY '25.
Yeah. You need it, okay.
Yes, it's not enough.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question was, are expenses related to hiring a new CEO included in the budget? The answer to that is no. The FY '24 budget was prepared with no information related to the need for a new CEO. We had sent an email to the CA Board Chair on January 4, asking for information related to a possible transition because of planning and preparation-type needs such as this, but I received no response. So no, that's not included in FY '24 budget. Any questions on that?
Well, I just, no, the question is, there was no, no need at that point. So there was no, it's quite reasonable that you'd have no information on that.
Right.
Does there need to be a budget adjustment made for that?
No, I don't, it's a little late. So I think that depending on what the timetable is, some of those costs would be incurred in this fiscal year. So that's all, I don't know, because I don't know what your timetable is. Like I said, I didn't have any information.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next question, and please detail the projects included in the category three capital expenses, especially interested in those that pertain to village requests. So those projects are not detailed in advance. They are identified and approved throughout the year as needs arise. So the amount allocated to village buildings in this draft is $600,000 in that amount. Generally, most of the time, if not all, most, if not all, of the village requests are accomplished in the category three projects. In fact, some of the ones that were on some of the village lists or requests for this, for FY '24 are already starting in FY '23. And I also wanted to point out that we do describe the three, the categories of capital projects, both on page 15 and page 125 in the draft budget document.
Are there any village requests that are being left out for?
Not intentionally, no.
No, I mean, like, for funding, for funding issues?
Not at this point.
My question is, are we able to accommodate all the village requests?
We don't know yet because things might come up in those buildings that would be emergencies that would push something out. So if something breaks, if we have an HVAC issue that would, that would need that funding, then no, some aesthetic improvement would not be made.
Ellen?
I know, before I came back on the board in October, the villages all submitted their, you know, requests. Or many of the villages submitted their requests.
Right.
A lot of them were simple maintenance.
Yes.
Paint, flooring, that kind of thing. In Town Center, again, Lynn presented a very comprehensive list. We still have no idea in terms of planning whether we desperately need to be repainted, but we have no idea whether that's being planned or not. We have no idea whether the smelly carpet will be replaced in, you know, a particularly popular room, this kind of thing. And I, you know, I looked at the, at the requests that other villages made, Harper's Choice, King's Contrivance. Nobody has any idea at this point. There used to be
That's correct.
Yeah, there used to be, like, a list that was sent out.
Yeah, at the, as the year progressed, but not in advance. So if you want to add to that.
I would say that we're, one of the requests that was made was to replace the Veranda canopy.
Right.
And that's in process. That's, so that's going to happen in FY '23. Interior painting is on the village. It's not on CA. That's, that's
I don't think the village knows that.
Maybe that's why they asked for the whole thing to be painted.
Right.
Rather than just a roof.
I'll tell the village.
So, but most of that stuff gets done.
And we meet with them, you meet with them monthly.
I'm on the village management meeting every month.
Right, right. So there's good communication.
But we just discussed this at our meeting on Wednesday night, and Lynn had no idea.
I'll follow up with Lynn on tomorrow.
Yep. Thanks.
Next question was, how much will it add, cost to add a full-time employee in Columbia Archives to work with Downtown Columbia Partnership, Howard Hughes, and other stakeholders to develop an archive, visitor center, welcome center? So we believe that an estimate for a full-time employee is premature at this time, and a welcome center is not a fit for the Archives. The Howard County Tourism Board is considering a visitor center in Columbia, and we recommend working, walking with them through that, letting them take the lead over FY '24, and to see if there's adequate support from the county and the tourism board before we proceed. And when we looked at that before, it was a joint venture among the three, and it fell apart. The tourism pulled out. So I think we should let them see if they mean it this time, and then
So would we, the goal be to form like a partnership?
Possibly.
Okay.
Open space, the board was shown an example of conversion from grass edges along pathways to native plants. How much is currently in the FY '24 budget for this program? Dennis said $50,000 at this point. Question was asked, how much will it cost to review the Columbia watershed plan and incorporate in it advances made in stormwater management and cloud burst in the last 13 years? We don't know that at this time. The board approved, this board approved on January 26 that a resolution that staff will work with the watershed advisory committee to evaluate the need to update that stormwater management plan. The next question was, how much will it cost to update the 2017 open space plan to incorporate changes related to climate change? Again, we would not know that at this time, as recommended previously by
that at this time. As recommended previously by staff, we provided this in December, we recommend that we would use FY '24 to, again, work with the advisory committees to evaluate the scope of potential updates to the plan, including any adjustments related to climate change.
Thanks.
Question was asked, how do we fund capital projects if no long-term debt is expected? Gosh, so, so in most years, we don't incur new cap, new long-term debt, right? We do that very infrequently, and yet we still fund capital projects either through cash remaining from the, from previous long-term debt issuance, cash generated from operations, or borrowings made on the short-term line of credit. So that's no change, that's a decades-long practice.
But, but this year, there's no plan to borrow on the line of credit?
With, the budget as drafted does not indicate that we need to use the line of credit.
Thanks.
So that... Key impacts of operational spending, has anything significant been cut or curtailed? Nothing of consequence was, that, or I could even identify was cut or curtailed in the draft budget.
Thanks.
Question was asked, if market rate, I believe related to non-resident rates for memberships, was solely based on what we see others charging, or is it at all based on how much it costs us to provide the service or product? So that is what similar or comparable products or items are being charged for in the competitive market. So we, as noted in our presentation, and many times we've made it clear that we try to align non-resident pricing to those market rates, and, but the entire budget's based on our costs, not one significant line, not specific line items. How does the capital budget affect the long-term strategy plan for maintaining and upgrading facilities? So this draft capital budget helps us to not lose ground on maintaining our buildings, but it does not fund substantial upgrades or major aesthetic improvements. The long-term, can I finish?
Yes.
Okay, how about I finish?
Yeah.
The long-term capital improvements plan was never projected to be fully funded, and that's the case for most organizations. That's just not possible. And that, and for CA, it reflects in large part the aging infrastructure and really the unsustainable inventory of buildings and amenities, such as outdoor pools and the totlats and neighborhood centers.
Yeah, Ellen?
Yeah, so I think you may have answered already, but I, I just want to make sure I understand what not losing, and I appreciate, first of all, I want to, I appreciate that some of these questions you just got today, and I really appreciate you getting them together in such short time. In, in our situation, not losing ground, I want to understand that more, because, you know, buildings age, and so the next, if, if we delay something X number of years, it costs more to do something in that building X number of years later. So you, I just want to get clear what you mean when you say we aren't losing ground.
So we're not losing ground from, from a maintenance or a safety standpoint. So we're keeping the roofs in, you know, correct and replaced as needed. We're doing HVAC, we're doing the MEP work that needs to be done. We're complying with regulatory requirements. What we're didn't, what we didn't have in here, and we talked about it back in October, was picking up the Supreme Sports Club renovation again, which, which needs to happen. So we're not losing ground on maintenance and safety, but we are not making progress on, you know, state-of-the-art or, you know, maybe community expectations, things like that.
So it's also possible that when we do get around to the, to use your example, to the Supreme Court sports renovation, that it might cost us more.
There's no question it will cost us more.
Okay.
No question.
So I guess the, I guess the clarifying question is, I think what you're actually getting at is, the $11 million in the draft budget for capital expenses, is that sufficient? Is it minimally sufficient?
So we, we've talked about this several times. So it is sufficient for maintaining the maintenance and safety needs and for doing some aesthetic improvements. It's what is, I think, appropriate and manageable, given the economic uncertainties, interest rates, and inflation at this time. So I, I feel like we've said that several times now over, since September, but if I could say it again, then that would be helpful.
Because I was just trying to clarify what the question, I thought was going.
Yeah. Next question, does the grant fund common expense of reserves? What are the impacts? So, so this was, I think, something that was noted in resident speak-out.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
Yeah, so, so the question as written says, does grant come, fund, grant fund come at the expense of reserves?
Okay.
What are the impacts?
Thank you.
So I believe the question was submitted a week or so ago, based on resident speak-out. So in the backup materials that were posted for January 26 and posted again this, this time, there, we were asked to provide scenarios for funding a grant at certain tranches to the Inter-Arbor Trust. And we said that we could manage $125,000 by reducing the reserve for abatements or bad debts for the annual charge. We feel that that is more conservative than needs to be. So that's, that's the context of the comment. The resident making this statement, I think, had, instead of understanding that that was the abatement reserve, thought it was emergency cash reserves, and that's not the case.
Oh, okay.
But, just to make that clear, you know, obviously, a use of funds is a use, a use of cash is a use of cash, right? And that would mean that something else would not be done.
Sure.
So Keith, I believe this is referring to a January 20, 2023 memo in, in the packet.
Yeah, well, and, and it was my question, and I just...
Right, it was from resident speak-out, right?
It was due to a resident, a resident said, I want you to fund the reserve fund, not the grant. And so that sort of juxtaposed the two in my head, and I wanted to see if you all were juxtaposing, but thank you for that response.
Bill, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
But thanks for asking.
I thought you raised your hand.
Next question was, what income is included in community programs? So the community programs and services are all of the programs and services that involve user fees. So it's memberships, school age services, and camps tuition, art center tuition, personal training fees, classes, lessons, court time, golf, cart rentals, et cetera. So it's all of those items. And also includes grants, that's those parts of the organization received.
Thank you.
Why has the expenses in the General Counsel's office increased by $100,000 from the pre-budget materials to the draft budget? So I mentioned that back in November, I believe, that, or I didn't just mention, I stated that. So there was an error in the Community Development and Real Estate Services budget, where they had included the legal fees for encroachment enforcement, and it belonged in the General Counsel's budget. So we moved it from the CD res to the General Counsel's budget. So there's a corresponding decrease, it's not an increase overall.
Okay, thanks.
Uh-huh. The totlot item in the packet, I believe that's referring to the slide deck?
Yeah, it's, it's actually the next agenda item, sort of bridges the two agendas.
Yes, suggests a higher capital expense, $644,000 than what's in the draft budget, $511.00. Does the budget for totlot needs to be increased? So the $511,000, $511,000 is, is the category two funding for the, for the totlots. There is some, always some use of cap three funding for totlots. So that's to make up the difference there. Question was asked, how much can reasonably be moved from category three to category two capital expenses? So category two expenses are those that are specifically identified and approved by the board. They're generally larger, they're generally one-time, they're not usually routine maintenance for the most part. Category three projects are small projects, generally routine maintenance. We talked about a lot of the village things like new carpet or the new awnings for the Oakland patio. So prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, the category three allocation averaged about $5.2 million. So those funds are used for, you know, as we mentioned, some funds are identified at the beginning of the year. I, I feel that given the reduction in the total dollar amount overall, from $5.2 million average to $4.2, I would say that there's, there's not any movement between category two and three that's reasonable at this point. The allocation spread across all CA assets. Open space receives the most, it gets 35% of the total, and it goes to pathways, bridges, sidewalks, totlots, ports. The village building allocation is next, they get 15.2%, and then the fitness clubs and the outdoor pools are right behind that. So every dollar of those monies are in these times.
So do you have a question on that? So in the pre-draft budget, I think there's a suggestion from staff that we could accelerate the funding, accelerate the judging of Lake Kit or accelerate the renovations on Supreme. I think they were given at a million or a million and a half. So if we followed one of those two suggestions, would we be moving cap three to cap two to do that?
No, the discussion at that time, I think, was clear, we would be increasing the capital budget, and we, we were asked to present those two, what, what, we were asked to show the impact on, on the operating budget of increasing the capital budget and by a certain amount, and I don't recall what it was. So we did this back in October, and we used those two, because those are the two projects that if we were going to incur additional interest expense and additional depreciation, which I would not advise, those were the two things that we thought should be considered for accelerating.
So, so if the board took either of those two options, there would have, there would have to be a corresponding increase to the overall capital budget?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Question asked, how much is required for the Oakland Manor elevator? So there's a state grant for $300,000 that will cover full cost of design and permitting. Construction cost estimates then will need to be developed as we move forward through design and permitting. That timeline will push construction into FY '25. So there is no further funding required in FY '24 for that project.
Hey, Don?
Your response to the previous question just raised a further question for me. So if I understood you correctly, when you, in answer to Eric's question, if we did those two capital projects, you say we'd have to add to the capital budget. If I understood your previous answer about how we fund the capital budget, I, I guess I wonder where that money, if we did that, where would that money come from?
So, so that's why we didn't recommend it. So it would come from, it would be a combination of ca, well, there were two very different dollar amounts. One was a million and one was two, right? So one would involve the use of cash generated from operations, may require some additional interest by short-term borrowing on the line. I would have to go back and look at that. That was, again, October discussion that we were told not to move forward with.
Right.
So I can look that up while we talk about something else.
Thank you. No, I don't need you to look at, because I'm not looking for specific numbers. I'm just trying, I know you're steeped in this, and you know it forwards, backwards, sideways, and every other way, and, you know, we, I do my, I'm not going to speak for anybody else. I do my best to catch up and, and understand that much of what you're saying.
Yeah.
So I, sometimes I ask questions that just help me put the pieces together, because they finally click. So thank you for doing it.
So do you have a further question on the Oakland Manor elevator? It's, I don't believe it's in the list of cap two projects.
Right.
So how was it funded, or is funded?
There was funding from...
State, the state gave us a $300,000 grant that gets us permitting fees, construction documents, permitting fees, and then FY '25, we'd come back for capital money.
Okay, so we don't need to match, we don't need to come up with like matching funds or anything?
We don't need the amount, the amount. We actually have the bids in for architectural services, and they fit within the $300,000. So we don't, we don't have to have any more money.
Okay, Jay?
But we don't have to put it in the budget and show that we got that money and that we're spending it?
No, we don't have to do that.
No?
Okay.
It would be FY '23, I think.
Right, it was. I thought it was already reserved.
So they, okay, so we got, so we already got the grant money then for this year?
Yes, we already have the money in hand.
Okay, we got the grant money, and we can already start using it to take the next steps on, on the elevator?
Yes.
So we don't need to actually take any action in this budget to make that happen?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see. Question was asked, how much are the administrative services expenses for FY '24? List that, it noted that on page four, it's 9.1 million before allocations and 831,000 after. Page five shows it at 3.0, almost 4 million after allocations. Page 105 listed about 10 million subtracting depreciation. Also shows different allocation amounts. So, so as we presented, even in the quarterly financials and in the budget, it was, would have been part of the presentation last time, it was discussed in October at the work session and, or at the board budget meeting, and also at the November community presentation. So administrative expenses for FY '24 budget on a GAAP accrual-based accounting basis are $10,269, as shown on page 105. So that's, that's what the most appropriate representation, because it's a GAAP, again, a GAAP accounting accrual basis. The presentations on pages four and five are informational, and they've been designed to help people identify more with these dollars, and they're on a cash basis or a modified cash basis to help people relate as if it were their own personal budget. So the various formats are explained. The page four exhibit shows annual charge, cash, operating expenses, and allocations, and the admin summary just rolls up the total and includes the annual charge division expenses. Question was asked, why the Office of the President was not shown in the pie chart on page five? The administrative services slice includes the Office of the President. It's all administrative components that are then allocated to the rest of the organization. There were some questions that I guess were forwarded in an email, I'm not sure. One, one we needed more clarity on. There were questions about the legal consultant fees for ethics complaints and where those are shown. The ethics complaints that have occurred to date and any fees related to those complaints that were actually investigated have been incurred and reported in FY '23. So compliance audit is reported on the Audit and Advisory Services page. Fees incurred to investigate complaints against board members are on the Board of Directors page, as are the, the legal fees incurred directly by the CA Board. Legal fees incurred by CA for the organization's benefit are reported on the General Counsel's page. There was a question about how do we account for the funds needed for Lake East exit? Where do we plan for a possible new CEO search? And these, and can these be taken from our reserve funds? So I don't see that these would be, according to the emergency cash reserves policy, they, they don't seem to qualify as emergency use. So FY '23, Q3, those, some of those expenses will be reported in full, because they were incurred in Q3. The search, as I mentioned, was not budgeted. If you start that this year, that would be in FY '23. If it's in FY '24, then we would need to accommodate that with some other. And I think that's it. I just have other questions.
Yeah, thank you for the really quick turnaround on that. That's, that's impressive.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does the board have any general questions on the, on either the responses or the budget itself? So I'll, I'll go around. Brian?
I did have one, I did follow up with my suggestion about a visitor plan. I did talk to the archives, and just like you found out, I got the same question. It was the wrong matchup, wrong.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, I got that.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Any further questions going around?
I, just, just a comment, just being the newbie, very well laid out, and honestly, in terms of watching the prior meetings and things like that, you've answered a lot of questions along the way. So I really appreciate all the work that was put into it, and it's easy to consume.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks. Team works hard. I'll pass that back to the, to the accounting team.
Any questions, questions going around? Dick?
I just want to thank you. You did a really nice job of going in on that and a quick turnaround. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. It was all hands on deck on that today.
Thank you. Any further questions, further questions from the board?
Bill?
Bill, it's up to you.
Do you want a question?
More.
Bill, do you have any questions?
Well, I just had maybe a comment or two. Number one, I mean, the, the number that stands out for me is the, the 12% increase in prices for FY '23 and anticipated 8%. So cum 20% increase in prices and still being able to deliver all our services, 23 pools open, this, this is, this is hard work, and, and thank you for all of that. That, that's the number that really sticks for me.
Yeah, I want to just give a shout out to the, to the team leaders, and, you know, the, the bulk of the, of the operations, obviously, is what Dan's overseeing, and he's gotten his team to just such a mature level of managing expenses to revenue. I, I really think that you, you really need to acknowledge that. You don't understand, I don't, I doubt that you see how really effective that is.
No. Yeah. And just as I was going through the budget, I have all my stickies here. I don't want to go through every single one of them tonight. But the one I wanted to highlight was with all of our talk about the, trying to slow the flow of water from rain, rain bursts, the variance on grant funding for rain gardens is pretty dramatic. And that's, that's not going to bode well looking forward. I just want to call everybody's attention to that, so.
Could you say what page you're looking at?
Just really quick, it's page 69.
69.
And go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I meant to clarify this earlier. So in the resident speak-out, there was a conversation about receiving grants. And while CA clearly is a 501(c)(4) organization, the, this team has become very effective at finding grant opportunities that apply to the (c)(4). And I would say that's the school-age services team did amazing last year with the NDE, you know, Maryland Department of Schools, not Environment. And we got some, the teen center's gotten some money, just all throughout the organization. Now there's jobs at Build Dollars in community services. So we've really done amazingly well with that limitation. And it's not, it doesn't mean that we're not allowed to receive grants. It just means that some organizations will not give them to us.
Bill?
That's kind of just my question for clarification. It was that as a (c)(4), we were not forbidden to receive them. Typically, it's the conditions that the grantor puts on us that we have to be a (c)(3) or otherwise. And it's not us, it's.
Correct.
Okay, just thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Any questions?
No.
Alan?
And would I be correct just to add on to that? That as, people can't give us tax deductible contributions.
So they can give us whatever they like. We cannot give them a tax deduction for it. Or I would say, let me put it this way, you should check with your tax advisor.
To me, that's all, yes. Obviously, we've gotten grants over the years from the state and others. But related to that, related to the whole rain garden thing, I just want to, it has been stated, if I'm understanding the statement correctly, that we can't, if, I keep picking on Bill, so I'm going to keep picking on, if Bill wanted a rain garden on his property, we couldn't create a program that would help fund that rain garden? Is that accurate or?
So the money that we're not getting is money, the program from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation does not cover the area in question. There's no money for that. They're looking at different areas now. So that was, so that was a corresponding decrease in expenses as well as that line coming down. So that is correct that we can't approve someone's property individually.
Right.
So that was, that was a pass.
Regardless of, but we couldn't just decide to budget that and make that happen.
Susan?
So our, we're not, we're prohibited from private in-yearment, which means the improvement of private property owners with the use of the annual charge.
Bill?
Just to piggyback on that, because I've done the research on that, it's a, it's a 501(c)(4) IRS thing.
Yeah.
We can't give people new windows and doors. Rain garden is kind of a similar improvement of a property and that's what it is.
It's too bad because it's an improvement for the community.
Right.
So just to clarify this, so when I got a grant for a rain garden on my property, it's because it came from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, it didn't come from the Leon, from the CELE. That's it. That's the big difference. So we could put 1,000 rain guards in as long as we don't have to pay for them.
The residents could put 1,000 in, yes, or somebody could.
Or get a big grant, bigger grant from Chesapeake Bay. Okay, just want to make sure that's clear.
Jenny?
Question on that, in the past, did the county give us the money? And then we gave it to residents?
The county did give us some money as well. So it was state money and there was county money as well.
Okay.
But they run out of money very quickly.
All right, but so it was a pass-through because we were paying people to do rain gardens in the past?
So we were not paying them to do rain gardens.
Pass-through.
Yes, pass-through.
Are we allowed to be that pass-through now or?
Allowed, what?
Are we allowed to surface that pass-through currently?
I don't see why.
Yeah, yes. We weren't the pass-through, the county was.
Oh, the county was the pass-through, okay.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay. So being, being that there's no further questions, I think the one thing I'd like to try to get general consensus on are motions that we'll need to make at the, at the next meeting regarding the budget. The most obvious one is rate and cap. The budget, the draft budget is based on the maintaining the 68 cent rate and the 3.5% cap. So that would be the obvious first motion that we would have to vote on. And I assume there's general consensus on that. I also don't, based on what I've heard today, I don't see any additional cat two additions that we would need to make. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Lastly, one thing that's certainly up in the air that we'll need to figure out today. So right now, if you look on the January 20, 2023 memorandum, there are three scenarios for a grant to IAT, a 50K scenario, a 125K scenario, and a 200K scenario. So we're not going to obviously vote today on this because it's the work session. But what I would like to do is figure out how we're going to approach this at the, at the meeting.
I guess I'd just like to point out that we asked for those three scenarios with those money limits, but there's actually a fourth scenario, which is zero.
That, that.
We didn't limit ourselves to deciding among these. We asked for input.
Mr. Chairman, given our last meeting and the discussion surrounding ethics policies, I'd like to ask that anybody who's crossed overs onto the interarbor not participate in this discussion so that we're sure that we're not violating any ethics policies or anything.
So that's up to the individual board members to make that decision?
I'd just like to ask that that happens. So it's up to them, but I'd like for that to happen.
That's up to the individual board members. But duly noted. Eddie?
Um, could I ask, just get a sense, I mean, for the chair to ask, do you sense that outside of that interarbor money, is everything, I mean, is the rest of the ON, operating budget okay? I mean, are we going to propose other changes? Because we should talk about that.
I got one.
It sounds like we've kind of settled on, you know, the, the capital budget and we kind of settled on the amount. But I'd like to know if we're going to do something on the operating.
Well, and this is actually the, an operating budget thing.
Yeah, that's why I said outside, I mean, this is the one I knew we're going to talk about, but if it was anything else.
Yeah.
Jenny?
Yeah. And I, yeah, because I really would like to propose a reconsideration of the Community Foundation $100,000 grant. I think they wanted more than that, but I really think we need to take another look at that, so.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
And then I guess the other question I have is, do you want sort of a sense of, without voting, like leaning on IAT number three or something like that? Or, I mean, does staff need that? Or you just already said, if we do that, that this will be the impact? Is that, or do you need it before then to come in with a final budget? I mean, I guess I'm not clear on what the staff really needs in terms of the IAT.
So we would need you to make a decision of, and Alan's 100% correct, the range is zero to 200. But I would say if you're planning on adding additional expense, then these items, these, these offsets apply there. So I don't have additional offsets for that, another $100,000.
Bill?
Yes. Very good point. I don't want to take away from that, but just, I'm trying to catch up. This is my first year, but I've sat over there for many of these meetings, these particular meetings, and typically straw votes happen during these meetings. I'm not wrong about that as far as getting to the final, you know, at the end of this month.
Yes, you get a sense.
So it would be appropriate to discuss the sense here.
Yeah.
And it'd be appropriate to discuss more what Jenny's saying, not to just say, we ought to just put the Community Foundation in there.
I didn't suggest that.
Right.
We're discussing that. But I saw, but with regard to rate and cap, I saw no opposition. Alan?
I know, Susan, that you explained this. My mind was trying to wrap, in your response to some of the questions earlier, my mind was wrapping around something else. Could you just give me the shorthand? What, what is the abatement reserve?
Yeah. So that is the, so when, that's the reserve for credits or reductions that people might apply for in the annual charge, right? So, so the, we bill the, sort of the gross amount on what people's, but for example, what we had that credit, we just gave a credit of, what, $58,000 for one property? That would be out of the abatement reserve.
My understanding is that that's a relatively new thing. Is that, so there's always been an abatement reserve?
Correct.
But my understanding, there was something about abatements that was really big, you know, a couple, a year or two ago.
Right.
And we, maybe it was pandemic related.
It was.
We were very concerned. We didn't know what was going to happen. How did that all turn out? Where are we with all, we were thinking that they could show up years from now. Where are we with all that?
So we've, that's been presented in the, in the quarterly reports and in the audit and financials that, so when the shutdown occurred in, you know, March of 2020, and there was just a complete uncertainty about the economy and people lost their jobs, we didn't know what was going to happen to property values, real property values. And that was universal, like, you know, for county and, you know, jurisdictions around the country. So we increased the abatement, the reserves for, in that uncertainty. We found over time, as you all probably know, that those values did not take that input impact, except for some commercial properties and that, but certainly residential didn't. So we were able to back off of that more conservative approach.
Do we tend to be, do we tend to use our abatement reserve? Do we add to our, historically, do we add to our abatement reserve?
We evaluated, we budgeted or anticipated hits against the reserve that we have to replenish. And we have budgeted conservatively during the pandemic, not knowing what these revaluations might cost us.
So we got these three potentials of 50 and 125,000, or two potentials, if we choose one of those. How does that shake up the budgeting on the, I mean, is that like, oh my God, every year we use, we're going, that's going to take us over our budgeted amount or?
Well, the one, the one thing we know is that we've processed more this past year than we had during the pandemic. And they're often for multiple years because the claimants are claiming an abate or reduction in value, not only for '22, but for '21 and for '20. So however, the budget in, in our estimation was, was conservative enough that we could reduce it to the extent that was being, that we suggested for the potential offset against some other operating expense.
Last question, so these two numbers, 1500, 25, don't need an exact number. What percentage do they represent of the total abatement reserve? Give or take? I mean, we talking?
How much money?
Small percentage, are we talking 90%?
How, how much money is in the abatement reserve in other words?
That's basically what I'm asking, yeah.
Well, if we, traditionally.
In this budget?
Traditionally, they were about 20, that would be about 20% of the abatement reserve.
The 50 or the 125? The 50 or the 125?
120, the 100, I'm taking the 100.
So it's about half a million dollars in the reserves?
I'm sorry?
So there's about half a million dollars in the reserve every year?
Traditionally, there was.
What is there now? Give or take? Going to hold you to an exact number, but.
0.5 now or something.
Right now, it's budgeted at over, about a million and a half, about a million and a half. And I don't have the exact dollar amount of abatements, credits that we've processed this past year yet.
Okay, so thank you. Has it, has it been generally trending upward or downward over time?
Upward.
Upward?
No question.
I bet how much each year?
So I don't want to speculate in dollars, but, you know, or guess, but if you feel like you can answer those questions, but I don't want to guess those. We could get back to. I don't know what we've processed, we're in the process of gathering that now, what we, what we paid out for credits that finished through the third quarter.
Were they going up pre-pandemic or is this all pandemic related?
Most of what we're processing is pandemic related.
Eddie?
So to talk about this, it did kind of jog my mind. Have we, have we anticipated the new senior tax credit that the county just, you know, put into effect? That is, it's a significant, because, because they lowered the, the age limit and the number of years and they upped the threshold. I got to admit, I mean, I looked at it and I said, whoa, this is like a 20, 30, 40% reduction. Have we planned that or is that something that's going to hit us down the line as we come?
We've incorporated that into the.
Okay, thank you.
So, so a question I have is if the abatement reserves are around 1.5 million, why in scenario three is it, do we, does it call for a reduction of 125K and not the full 200K? Why is, why don't we just add the extra 75K to the abatement reserve for scenario three?
We didn't feel it was prudent to reduce the reserve, the abatement reserve further.
I was just wondering why that there's a magical number at 1.3 and 75,000 versus 1.3.
It was based on our estimate of right now, what we were paying out and the fact that they're trending up.
Any further questions? Okay, so what I would like to do is get a sense of the board for, so there's a couple ways we could, we could do this. We could take successive motions and vote for each grant until we, till one passes. Or we could try to get a sense of the board now for which of these three scenarios would, would pass a motion in, in two weeks. So I guess I'll start off with the 200K grant and just sort of get a sense of the board who would be in favor of that or at least would want to see that as a motion on the agenda for.
Which one?
The, this is for IAT, the 200, the 200K, the 200K scenario. So if.
Do you want to have a discussion on this or just?
Yeah, you can discuss it.
And this is a straw vote? This is just?
It's just a sense of the board.
Sense of the board, okay.
And I, can I just ask, this is part of that, that grant bucket that we were, we were talking about, because at one of the resident speak-outs, there was conversation about this grant being brought to the table as, as opposed to other grants weren't being considered, is what I recall from the conversation.
I can.
I think.
We have a policy where we, generally speaking, if we want to make a donation to the, I think it's called the Community Foundation of Howard County, that they can then dole it out. So that's one bucket. We have also historically made other large grants, sometimes to the interarbor, sometimes to the downtown partnership, and they are, they're included in that policy, but they're outside that one bucket. So that's what that person was referring to, that those two, those two organizations basically have, have had a historical special place that this board has given them funding outside of that amount that goes for smaller grants to the community foundation.
And Bill?
Just, just to give you a, a, a complete picture, the staff, when preparing this budget, when they initially outlined the framework for it, recommended no grant money be awarded for FY '24. This board is currently contemplating funding the interarbor trust and at this point, only the interarbor trust. Jenny has a, an idea about the Community Foundation that we'll address soon. And when we discussed that option of funding only the interarbor trust, this board arrived at a compromise to allow staff to find someplace in the budget where money for that particular grant could be found. And these are the three things that were, or four things, the zero dollar being one that Alan brought up, that we're contemplating here tonight. So this is a little bit of a departure from what was first presented during the budget process, but we are here now contemplating it and discussing taking money from some other allocation, allocating purpose for this grant. So just to give you a heads.
Dick?
Historically, we just gave money away to Helter Skelter. We didn't have a policy. Milton would get requests and we'd give money.
I think that's wrong. We had a policy. One, one person, please.
Before, we had no policy. There was money that was given away, there was no way of vetting it, the organizations, and it just kind of happened. And we decided we needed a policy. And we decided we needed a policy, and so we set up a policy. And one of the things we agreed to is we, the board was not in a position to judge which group needed the money or could do the best thing with the money. There is a community foundation that distributes money, has professionals on the staff, and they could look into these things for us and distribute the money. We put some restrictions on it. It would have to be spent in Columbia, and we would have a staff member from CA who would sit on their committee. And it was a good system, and we put it into effect, and then COVID hit. And we didn't have money. We didn't know what our budget was, and so like a lot of other programs, it just disappeared. And now that we're back in a new normal, if you will, the board would like to, has discussed this, and there is a general consensus, I think, that we'd like to get back to that program. And it wasn't put in the budget, I guess the board was not really clear that, you know, when the original draft was presented, that that was something we wanted to do. And so now we're trying to fix that.
Well, we are not. The board did not vote.
No, I'm saying, we haven't voted on it, but there was discussion. The Inner Arbor thing is a whole different situation. And I have to say that when I joined the board, because I was opposed to Inner Arbor and the Inner Arbor Trust, for reasons I don't think we need to go into right now, but what we ended up with is an easement on our property, on CA property. We turned over the daily maintenance and the programming and the build out to this other organization.
Just, I'll use the point of order, I guess, is what we were talking about. If this conversation can be better had, you know, for Dick to, for us to, you know, for us to catch up so that I can get spun up, I'm okay with that if we wanted to move on from that piece.
Well, I just want to say that, so that's a different kind of a situation. We have an easement agreement. We've been doing maintenance for them. It's our land. And they have asked us to give them some money to help them raise money to improve our land.
Right.
And so that's where that, and traditionally, we have granted them money each year until COVID and everything. So that's kind of a background on, you know, what this is all about.
I appreciate it. Lynn?
And, you know, again, this was a creation of CA to take the development of Symphony Woods away from CA directly to a 501(c)(3) that then could raise money. For instance, last year, the trust was able to get in $4 million in grant money. That's great. It's all for cap, pardon?
Not yet. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, the state and the county, the two entities have promised it. The problem is, again, the operating costs. So the money is there to build, it's, you know, but the operating costs oftentimes need, you know, subsidy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'll just say
A good trick.
That I want to make it clear that the board never, has not voted to give a donation. It's possibly considering it. I also got on the board in opposition to the Inner Arbor Corporation, and still in opposition. I think what they've done is excellent. I think the new plan they have for the property is light years ahead of the original plan, but I'm firmly opposed to a private, non-accountable corporation having control of the jewel of Columbia, of CA, or however many acres there are in Symphony Woods. So I'd be happy if that was all brought back within CA, hire them to, the people who are running it to continue what they're doing, but I'm not going to be in favor of any donation to Inner Arbor.
And just if there are any other responses, my point of clarification, because some of this, I've had an opportunity to review prior recordings and things, so I've been spun up a little bit on some of these components, but it's really understanding the grant bucket and whether we're considering these specific outside of other potential grant opportunities, and I received that clarification.
So a point of information on that, right now, if you read this draft budget, there's $0 allocated for grants.
Right.
So any grants would have to be done by motion at the February meeting.
Right.
So right now, if we pass this as is, there'd be no grant money, period. Susan?
So two things. One, the Columbia Festival of the Arts was also something that was, I believe, founded by CA. So there is some parallel for other organizations, and they received a grant every year for many years to provide the lakefront festival that, in lieu of Columbia Association expending those funds. So I don't, I just wanted to clarify that. So it's not that Inner Arbor Trust is the only special snowflake. There are other, you know, special snowflakes. The other thing is, in the grant tranches that we've presented here, we've tried to make it clear, and I think we have, that we could fund, we could absorb $125,000 of additional expense, whether that's Inner Arbor Trust, Festival of the Arts, or the Community Foundation, or some combination, from the annual charge abatement reserve. If you want to go to this, there's been no discussion about the increment over that 125, get to 200, and that's out of community operations, and it was three different pieces. We couldn't come up with that for one specific thing, but it's, we had budgeted, and in the budget is incremental aquatic weed harvesting, some surveying work associated with encroachments, and invasive weed management. So those, that's the offset, the additional offset that would be required to get to 200,000.
So does this budget call for any support for Columbia Festival of the Arts or anything like that?
No. No, it does not.
It's all silent on grants.
Right. But
Bill's had his hand.
Bill?
Just two things. Since we're all coming clean on the Inner Arbor, many moons ago, many years ago, when I was vice chair of the planning board, I voted to approve the chrysalis and all the designs there. Just wanted to put that out there. And I just, to Lynn's comment, I'm unclear on this. You said two things. You said that the Inner Arbor Trust has $4 million from the candidate state, or it's been promised?
They have grants. They've been promised. They've been, they've been given grants. Again, for capital projects. They would be for the colonnade, apparently, along the
So do they have that in bank, or this is just a promissory note that at some point may be activated?
I have no idea. I have not been on the board for 10 months.
All right.
I can find out.
I heard both. I just was trying to get clarification. Thanks.
The grants were given for the state and the county, so, you know.
Ginny?
They're being planned for, so.
Ginny?
Yeah, where I'm not clear in terms of Columbia Festival of the Arts, it looks like on page 72, there will be some funding, but I think this year, this budget, according to what they've said, they did get funding, and they were in charge of the events down at the lakefront, but it wasn't actually in the budget. So that's where I'm getting confused, and this may or may not be in the
I can clarify that. So that was a payment for services. That was not grant funding.
Right. That was a fee for service.
Right.
So in a way, I kind of look at Inner Arbor Trust as a payment for services too, because they're running all the free events for people.
Well, then they could submit a proposal for those fees, and we could look at it that way, but that would not be a grant then. That would be a payment for services.
See, I think that's a problem with what's a grant, and what's a partnership, and what's a
Bill?
So just if I'm hearing you right correctly, Susan, that if the Inner Arbor submitted a contract proposal to provide services in Symphony Woods, we could deal with it in that way. We wouldn't even have to fund the grant at all, right?
And we would have to look at that, whether those services benefit Columbia?
Subject to the procurement process, yeah.
And just the evaluation of the nature of the work, you know, it would have to be, I mean, the ideal thing is a grant or a loan.
So at this point, we're beginning to run out of time on this issue.
Can I clarify with that?
So I just want to come up with a proposal. So it seems like it's getting to the point where we're debating the actual motion versus debating on whether or not to have a motion. So this is what I'd propose. What I propose is put three successive motions on the agenda. We could have a motion to approve the 200K grants. If that doesn't pass, you can have a motion to approve the 125K grant. If that doesn't pass, we can have a motion to approve the 50K grant, and we could just debate them in succession at the meeting and then take a vote on it. Is that a reasonable solution to everyone on the board?
Just a point of information, just so I can inform the voting, is there precedence for, precedent for adding money to the spending or to the budget mid-year if we get an update throughout the year that says that we're running ahead of plan, or that we've, you know, operating expenses have come in, or anything along those lines? Is there, does that happen?
Generally not for, generally not for grants.
No. So generally, no, that we would, we don't typically amend the budget. We did in '21 because of the pandemic. Well, we just, we amended because of the pandemic, more so because of the other side of the story, if there's a significant reduction in resources.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Dick?
There's some, we were talking about provision of services, purchase of services versus grants. The situation here is, it's easy to get money for something you can put your name on. So these grants are for this, you know, for something like the colonnade, they can put a plaque on it saying, this is where you got the money. What they're looking for from us
Dick, you're debating the motion.
No, I'm just saying, but I'm trying to clarify what this is. It's not, it's not a, it's not a purchase of services. What they need is money for things like insurance and staffing and stuff that you don't get grants for, because nobody can put their name on it, basically.
Alan?
And so that's what that
Do we know when we stopped funding Festival of the Arts? I know when we had our last city fair, that was 12, 13 years ago, but 13, 14 years
I think it was just FY '20.
Yeah.
FY '20?
Yeah, it was pandemic driven.
Yeah.
So is there any objections to the plan that I've put forth where we can, where we'll vote on these successively?
Could you run through them again, just for
So the way I propose handling this at the February meeting is, there'll be a motion to approve the scenario three.
Okay.
A motion to approve scenario, if that fails, then we would move to approve scenario two. If that fails, we would move to approve scenario one.
Okay, I think that's reasonable.
I believe Alan's, well, if
If they all three fail, there's nothing else to pass. There's no point in voting for nothing.
All right.
Nothing is nothing.
I mean, if all three fail.
Well, then you got nothing, and that's it.
Nothing.
Okay, so that's the way we'll handle that, and might be a good idea, just print that on the agenda, so I can follow it. So, okay, so is there anything further that we would need for?
Ginny's, Ginny had brought up.
Okay, Ginny?
You had brought up the question about
Community Foundation.
The Community Foundation of Howard County, that I'm going to be making a motion to approve $100,000 for them, which is a, I'll check exactly how much was rejected before. It may need a reconsideration of that vote, or it may be a different amount, and we just go ahead and vote, so.
So I do have a question for you. How would, so to make that a motion on this budget, how would you offset that?
How? That's not
Same way, same way this
That would be up to the staff.
Bill?
I was going to say, where's that money come from? Then you fund the Inner Arbor Trust with $25,000?
No.
Yeah.
No, you just can't make a $100,000 claim the night before the budget. This is, we don't, every dollar is accounted for.
It's a huge budget.
But if all of these three levels go down, then there's still potentially $125,000 coming from the abatement if we wanted to use it for some other grant purpose.
No, I didn't have that in mind. I've had in mind that it doesn't, in that huge budget, it doesn't seem like that's significant, and that has nothing to do with the Inner Arbor Trust, because I'll be supporting 200,000 for that.
Dennis, did you, did your hand raise?
I did, and then I'm reluctant to bring it up this late, but I would want to consider whether it's time to sunset the Inner Arbor Trust as it exists today, knowing that next year when they take over maintenance, this request is going to get incrementally bigger by at least $100,000. And you can have a, you know, a foundation that would raise money for capital assets that's separate from the operation. So what I would say is, at some point in time, if you're doing 200 this year, 125, whatever it is, know that when they take over maintenance, unless we continue to take it over, that request is going to go up incrementally by at least 100 grand.
So the question I have is, if they're taking over maintenance from us, wouldn't that, wouldn't there be an offset then? I mean, if that would be less money, we would have to take maintenance.
It's incremental payment to them, and if we don't, we don't do anything else, but we could take that 125, if they didn't need that 125 or 100, we'd spend that on invasive plants, we'd spend that on watershed, we'd spend that on programming at the lakefront, we'd spend that somewhere else.
Alan?
Just so I'm clear, they're taking this maintenance over next year because that's a provision in the easement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dick?
I'm glad you brought that up, because at one point, we were talking about revising the easement, which, since there are two parties to it, we'd have to agree with the trust to make those changes, but the original easement was written in a whole different context, and maybe this is something we need to put on the agenda to discuss in the future. I think the old easement needs a lot of revision, and is that something we should be looking at?
So I'll recognize that point. I don't think this is actually a budget discussion point, but I think it's, I think it's an important point for future discussion, possibly over the next couple of months.
Yeah.
So I think that's something that we'll definitely need to discuss in the future.
Yes.
But I don't want to discuss that further today.
Maybe the BOC, the BOC could look
The BOC could certainly put it on the, put it on a future agenda.
Yeah, because I'd rather have our guys doing the maintenance, frankly. It's our land.
But at this point, in this particular meeting, I don't think it's appropriate to discuss the easement. So Ginny, you had something you wanted to bring up? Oh, you already brought it up.
I've done it three times.
Yeah, sorry.
It's enough.
So the, I guess the question I still have on that motion is, if we, if we make a motion to add 100K to the Community Foundation, I think part of that motion, we need to figure out how that's offset.
Well, I think there's two weeks where the staff can tell us what they're going to cut.
We're done. We already did that. So that's provided in the Inner Arbor Trust documentation.
Okay, not going to do it for the Community Foundation.
Alan?
Well, I guess, I hear you, and although I wouldn't be in favor of it, is within the realm of possibility that the board could approve 200,000 for the Inner Arbor, could approve X amount for Community Foundation, what would the staff do in that case?
So what we would do is, we would come back with a greater reduction for community operations, because there is no margin. We just talked about how expenses are managed to revenue so tightly for most of the organization that it would have to be those discretionary and incremental programs in community operations. So instead of 75, it would be whatever, it would be 175 in that scenario.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
And I would just point out that that motion was voted on and failed previously, if I remember correctly.
Yes, that's what I was saying. I'd want to look whether it'd have to be a reconsideration, or if the amount is a little different, then it would just be a direct vote. That was my point.
I believe it would have to be reconsidered.
If it's the same amount.
But it'd be a similar
But if I had a different amount, then maybe it'd just be a new vote.
Well, I mean, it could be a new vote anyway, because it's, you're going from a draft budget to a budget.
I just want to say that this is fiscally irresponsible and a violation of everyone's fiduciary responsibilities to just lump $300,000 at the last minute onto a budget that doesn't account for this. This is insane.
Dick?
Thank you.
Well, it could be voted down. The problem is, it's not just the money. We had a structure. We had a system set up with somebody being on their board. We'd had discussions. So there's a whole another piece of this in money, and I think we got the other piece of it straightened out, and maybe, say for the coming year, the following year, this would be something that we would revisit.
So given all that, can I get a sense of the board of whether or not we should put this on the agenda as a motion? So everyone in favor, just raise your hand.
Which?
The Community Foundation.
I say no.
So there's not much support.
Okay.
Well, I will say, I'd be more inclined to support that than the Inner Arbor Corporation, but
So I see that there's, A, we voted on So there, so I see that there's, A, we voted on this in the draft amendment and we got a memo, and I see support for, for having those three motions as discussed, and I saw no objections to going through the scenarios. Whereas this, we, that was voted down the previous meeting, and I don't see any additional support.
Okay.
We've reached our time on this.
And we've reached our time on this, so is there any further discussion additions?
One more motion. I, I believe we should have a motion at our next meeting that the board discuss publicly the timetable for hiring the next president and allow that to be communicated to the staff so they can budget for it either in FY '23 or FY '24. That, that was brought up at the beginning of our discussion here and kind of fell off the table, and it's an important thing that we need to discuss.
I, I agree, but I think that's actually outside the budget process of.
We, we were asking what the impact would be to the budget. That's what we're gonna have to discuss, and we need the timetable in order to do that.
Is that, so I'll ask Susan and Dennis, is that something that we'll need to discuss before passing the budget? Do you need additional numbers or any input from the board before we pass the budget on that?
Yeah, I think so because there were, again, yes, you should, because there would be potentially significant expenses, there'd be a search, I don't know when that would occur, it wouldn't all, I don't, it wouldn't all be certainly done in FY '23, so that'd be a '24 expense, and there might be relocation expenses, et cetera. So I would say yes, we would need some funds budgeted for that.
And I'll just add, staff doesn't know that timetable. I, as a board member, don't know that timetable. If there's anybody at this table that does, please share it and share it now if you can.
And I, I don't think that timetable's been decided. The only thing that we have to go on is the timetable that was used two years ago, and the timetable that I believe was used two years ago was, took roughly nine months or so.
Well, that's time from start to finish, it doesn't say when to start yet.
Obviously it doesn't say when it starts, but there, there's a time to, there's a time to get an RFP, then there's a time once the RFP was approved to actually go through the process, and then there's a general onboarding time.
Right.
So if, if you, if you assume a same nine-month time interval.
I think six, six, seven months, probably.
I, I'm just going by the, the actual dates used.
So the search before that was done in two and a half, three months?
So.
It all depends.
Part of the issue here is, I mean, you had one that's done a couple of months, one that took nine months, you have a variable, you have a very difficult variable to estimate ahead of time. Granted, budgets are difficult to estimate ahead of time, so. Alan?
But I guess I'm also concerned, I mean, I hear the concern, but it's almost like we're in a chicken or the egg kind of thing because if we're gonna, if we're gonna vote on the budget in two weeks, that's when we would vote on a timeframe. We don't have a timeframe, so we can't give information to the staff to create the budget before two weeks from now because we don't know the timeframe until we vote, so we have to wait until the 23rd, and then maybe we'll have some discussion of president search, and, and that might cause the staff to have to go back and revise some things, but, but we can't do it now.
I think that, that has some implications for any additional things that we choose to add right now, because any, any fluff that we, that we have from the budget, whether it be abatement or otherwise, is really gonna potentially be eaten up there, so just to.
So how, how much did this cost two years ago?
I was just gonna say, I think the, the grant, the firm that we selected, it was only, and it may have gone up with the survey that we requested them to do, it was about 26,000 now, we probably paid more when we requested extra work, like the survey, but that was the, Patrick could tell us, the bid, and that is not exactly, some of the others' firms did have much higher bids, but that is not, it's an international firm that we got bigger until.
So if we just spent 26,000 last year, that's sort of noise in a budget, that's 70-something million dollars. So I don't, I don't think, I, I think we can pass the budget and then work on the, the RFP separately from the budget.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just a point to bring home.
I understand that this is roughly a $75 million organization, and there's a lot of, you know, we, we have to report these all in thousands of dollars because there are a lot of big numbers in this book. But $26,000 to everybody out there listening right now, they pay a thousand, $2,000 into that pool, that's a lot of money to them, so I don't want to disrespect them at all. I want to make sure that we're, we're being wise with the money, no matter what it is with relation to the total budget.
No, I, 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 I agree, but it's, keep in mind when you do a budget and you, and you see the numbers here, the, the numbers in here are not going to be exact, you're not gonna go, when you, when you get the quarterly reports and the final report, those numbers are not going to add up exactly to that budget because there's, there's uncertainty during the year. I mean, you, things happen all the time that create uncertainty. So a budget is, a budget serves two purposes. The budget basically allows the organization to state what her priorities are for the year, and the, the budget presents an estimate. And again, you, you look at all the time and you'll see all kinds of variances, because again, there's only so much you can estimate, there's only so much you can think into the future. We, we don't have crystal balls on this board. So when you're looking at a $77 million budget, yeah, $26,000 to a household is, is a fair amount of money, but when you're trying to allocate $77 million, I mean, it's, you can't predict to that level of detail. So, and again, staff does a great job in trying to make those predictions, but at some point, it just becomes impossible to get down to the penny. So that, that's, that's the point. So I, I don't think that we need to, I don't think we'll need to adjust the budget based on what comes back from the search firm. Any, any, any further discussion on this topic? Okay. We'll go to the next topic, that would be totlots, so Dennis has a presentation.
This is waiting in the wings patiently.
And thank you for your patience.
All right, I'm here tonight to talk about the strategic direction of CA's play areas. Actually gave this presentation in March, a version of this presentation back in March of 2020, it was the last in-person board meeting before the pandemic shut everything down.
Right, it was your fault.
So I think four of you actually have heard a version of this.
Yeah.
We've taken the opportunity to update some slides where appropriate with new information and new data. And a key part of that presentation, a lot of discussion was around why we had to move from the wooden fort and play structures because of the less effective wood, wood preservatives that are, are used, that are allowable in playgrounds today, to the prefabricated steel, powder-coated steel structures that you're starting to see go up today. So the, the images on the screen are actually fairly representative of what the system looks like today. There's the Stevens Forest Playground that was installed in 1996, actually, so there's been steel structures out there since 1996, that is a two-to-12-year-old playground. The lower right is the typical wooden totlot fort that, there's still a lot of them out there, and there was three different options of that. And then in the lower left, there's the, the newer rascals that are going in, where we also include a little seating picnic area as well. So those three images are pretty representative of what the, what the system looks like today. So the objective tonight is just to provide you with information regarding the totlot inventory to be used by CA staff, village and CA boards as guidance for totlot replacements. The outline for the presentation, historical perspective, inventory, ongoing operating and maintenance costs, existing conditions, the intermediate replacement strategy that we've been using since 2020, just, just a little before, the long-term capital costs, proposed plan and objective criteria that we would use to decide on how we replace totlots going forward, and then the action items that we think are most appropriate.
Action items that you're gonna want from us or that you're gonna be doing?
Oh, from, from you.
Yeah.
So the totlots in Columbia were originally intended to supplement the natural amenities of the open space by providing areas where concentrated play could take place, primarily geared towards preschoolers ages two to five. So I actually got that right out of the archive, so that was the original intent, and it's why that the majority of the system still serves that, that intended age range today. From 1967 to 1974, 88 of those totlots were constructed Columbia-wide. That was nearly four times the average in other communities at that time across the U.S. I thought that was fascinating. So we've always been very, had a number of totlots per residential dwellings. An additional 87 totlots were constructed between 1997 and 2010.
75, it says.
Initially ranged in size from 600 square feet to 2,000 square feet, but the majority of the totlots, if not all of them, are now over 2,000 square feet. And as the standards change, there's specific standards that we have to follow, fall zones, you know, the footprint of the totlots have, has had to grow over the years. Installation of special totlots.
Just a question, we were talking about totlots, does this include playgrounds?
Yeah, we refer to totlots, I mean, that's a very, you know, as you know, that's the terminology we use for playgrounds. We have gotten more comfortable using the term playground and started referring to special totlots as playgrounds now because they are two to 12.
This presentation is for everything?
For everything.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So installation of the special totlots or playgrounds, they are interchangeable terms. Were reserved for neighborhood center parks, that started in 1996 with Stevens Forest. The advantages of those, parking, larger footprint, ADA accessibility, and they're geared towards an, an older age group. So totlots served an important role in attracting young families to Columbia then, and they continue to serve an important role today. So here's another then and now picture. The upper left is the typical fort, wooden fort structure, and in the lower right, that's Star Path and Owen Brown. And again, adding picnic table has been well received by the community. One thing I'd like to mention, you know, this is a, a kind of a static structure, the wooden fort, you climb up the steps, you go down the slide. So this, the rascal unit that you see in the lower right actually has seven different activities that the, that children can play in that group, so it's, it's much more interactive than the standard fort structures. And now we're not the only game in town. This is a drone shot of Blander Park, it's Howard County Rec and Parks Destination Playground. In fact, there's 17 Howard County playgrounds that are accessible in and around Columbia. And this is, you know, when I've taken my four kids here, this three-story slide, they shoot after that thing.
Could you say what's the, if that's the what, there are these things, what's the so what? What's the impact or projected impact from your point of view on CA's situation?
Of having Howard County playgrounds?
County playgrounds like these.
Well, there's, I'll show some pictures, some slides later on that shows how it overlaps with the service area of multiple, multiple totlots, CA totlots, so that's.
And, and so therefore, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so and therefore.
And therefore you could consider consolidating some totlots and providing some different amenities.
Okay.
Ginny?
But it's not only the Howard County Parks and Rec, it's also the school system.
Yeah.
With all the schools that have developed that have play areas, basketball, et cetera.
In fact, the slide.
That you didn't have when we all started with the totlots.
I think that's where they're bringing it here.
The slide that you have up here shows the distribution of CA totlots, Howard County Recreation Park, Parks, and the elementary school playgrounds. Now, when we showed the service areas later on in the presentation, we did not include the schools because it's the Howard County Schools policy that they are not open to the public even, but we all know that people use them, so I, I showed the distribution of those on this map. So Columbia has a lot of playground offerings for our community, that's the what of this slide.
I'm sorry, did you say just elementary school? What about middle school and high school?
I did only include elementary schools, yeah.
There aren't too many playgrounds at high schools.
And quite few.
Well, not playgrounds, but you have fields, you have track, like Oklahoma Mills High School, Middle School, then you got three elementary schools in Oklahoma Mills, you got a lot of facilities, is what I'm trying to say, that offer.
For this purpose, it's just playgrounds.
Okay, okay.
This slide right here shows the distribution of CA's 175 totlots across all of our villages.
What does it mean that a totlot is not open to the public? Do we have guards not letting them in?
No, but they are, they're fenced in at the neighborhoods, at some neighborhood centers, and then they don't always meet the commercial playground standards that we have to follow. So some of those are only for that neighborhood center, they're not open to the public.
What, what do you do like at Stevens Forest where it used to be daycare? It's now the Village in Howard, and you have a, a play area there that's just fenced in and not being used?
It's maintained, and that one is not locked, and it's open to the public.
It is, okay, great.
My kids have played on it.
Okay.
They quite love going to the Stevens Forest one, then in that fenced-in one, and then walking one minute down the pathway to another one.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So we have a lot of totlots, and it requires a lot of upkeep and maintenance, and it's two teams within CA that largely do that task. That's the capital improvements team and the open space operation team. It ranges from weekly maintenance visits, including trash collection, safety checks, redistributing the mulch, routine cleaning, replacing the mulch, which requires coring out, digging out the 12-inch deep mulch and bringing in brand-new, you know, specified playground mulch, quarterly inspections, annual full structure inspections, and annual repairs.
So, so we only, so we only replace the mulch once every nine years or so?
Five to seven is our standard, and some areas it's more often because of the environment that it's in.
But we get, okay.
Also in 2020, I presented to the board our standard of care. So all the tasks, all the upkeep of open space assets and just open space in general, you know, we have maintenance standards that we've prepared that inform our staff on how to care for these assets and, and open space, and that document is available. Part of that document is a resource section that calls out the specific standards that we have to follow and resources that were used to generate the, the maintenance practices and replacement schedule. So operating and maintenance costs, this was 2022 costs, from annual cost for the weekly maintenance and inspections, annual cost for mulch replacements, mulch replenishments, that's just adding a little bit of mulch, all the totlots get mulch replenished per year, the annual cost for repairs, and the tree removal and pruning associated with keeping everything off the structure and keeping the, the area around totlots safe, comes in a little over a million dollars, which is about $5,700 per totlot. It looked like we're on track for right around that right now with FY '23 year-end estimates.
And I assume these are amortized, may not be the right word, but some of this is, is equipment, some of this is, is material, some of this is contractors we pay, some of this is an allocation of your staff's time to do all this.
Absolutely, yeah. And the distribution of that from year to year certainly could change. So this year, we've been a little more contractor-heavy than staff.
Does that mean it costs more? Does that mean it costs less?
It's coming out to be about the same, it's just what, what that totlot needed based off of our inspections. So one thing I'd like to put, I'm gonna talk about the age ranges, but, of the totlots and playgrounds, but one thing to point out that for us to consider it a new, you know, a new, it means every structure was replaced. a new, it means every structure was replaced. So when we say 103 totlots are 20 years or older, many of those have had the swings replaced, but not the fort, or some element.
Just a quick note, when I first read this slide, I thought that there were a lot of people over the age of 20 who used that.
You had to look at it like three times.
That's because you're one of them, right?
Yeah, all that non-park-like.
I do have one question on the slide. So of those 103 totlots that are 20 years or older, how many of them are end-of-life?
They are approaching. You know, that is the batch that we are focused on mostly, but the wood preservatives used back then were significantly more effective than the wood preservatives used today. So many of them are hanging in there. Fifty-two are between the ages of 10 and 20, three, four to 10, and then there's 12 that are four years older or newer. So the replacement schedule has...
I assume at least at this point, the older ones are grandfathered in, grandparented in, in terms of the non-allowed preservative.
Yes. So I spoke about this on the opening slide, but the traditional wooden CA fort structures in open space have been failing prematurely. This is even ones that we did replace with newer, you know, even 10 years ago are failing after about eight years because of the wood preservatives. And that's due to the change in the lumber treatment processes. So we have, and we say recently here, but it was back from 2020, we started moving away from wood into pre-manufactured metal play structures. I should have mentioned that we did leave the 2020 information in here, scratched it out just as a reference point, and then highlighted when anything was changed. So in 2020, 18 wooden swing structures were temporarily closed. Fifteen of those have been, I'm sorry, 14 of those have been replaced. Our annual structural inspection was completed by our CIP team just last week, in which 15 swings, wooden T-swing just like this, were taken out of service. So we're starting the process of planning how to work through those. Some of those will be part of complete replacements. We roughly do seven per year, and some of them will just be going in and just replacing those swings. So the total number of swings, system-wide, out of service is 19 currently. So in 2020, all but four of those were replaced. So the intermediate replacement strategy that we had implemented since 2020 and have been following is based on safety inspections, safety standards, and estimated repair costs. ADA accessibility and inclusive play are considered at the time of replacement. We standardized the play equipment for efficiency in space planning, purchasing, maintenance, and operations. So we did select a limited number of units. Wooden play structures, the fort swings, were replaced with pre-manufactured powder-coated metal and plastic units. The two units in the two-to-five-year range are the Rascal and Firefly. The intended age group remain two-to-five-year-olds. And the existing special totlots or playgrounds, like at Stevens Forest, Dockside, Alcorn, Swansfield, there's actually 10 playgrounds that are two to 12 already. Eleven soon to be six months. Those pre-manufactured structures would be replaced when needed with similar-sized structure that also serve two-to-12-year-olds. So we intended to maintain that policy, to offer diversity and an expanded age group. And then additional play activities for two-to-12-year-olds would be considered when space, budget, and topography allows. So we often get fixated on just the fort being age group range, but there's actually quite a few other elements, and that kind of creates the differences from totlot to totlot across the whole system. And I have some images coming up of that.
When you say, given our conversation lately, that word budget there in that last line, so does that, when you put that in there, does that mean, do you think of it as well as we find funds because this didn't cost as much, and so we have a few extra funds left over? Or are you talking about the board budgeting a different amount for...
I'm speaking towards how we carve up the dollars we already received. So, and that's based off of first and foremost, safety. So if there's, you know, a totlot, might have to get an expanded footprint, costs a little bit more, we may be able to do less, or we might not be able to put a cosmic warp climbing structure that's for two to 12 because we don't have the adequate space, or we had to use the dollars elsewhere.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Have you ever worked with the community on closing one totlot and then increasing another one to make it more of a playground in the area, but...
Closing any playground has been met with opposition, as many of you know, but we are laying out a strategy to do that very thing later in this presentation.
Yeah, because we have one in Oakland Mills that we kept offering. Okay, all right, thanks.
So some of the other activities, not just the fort, are the cosmic warp, but there's several out in the system now. That is a two-to-12-year-old unit. Now, my 12-year-old and 13-year-old would do the cosmic warp, and they would still get on that spring animal and try as big as they are.
Which of us has?
So you would do it, yeah.
Which of us has?
And then seesaws and play panels. And then, of course, we've always had two-to-12-year-old activities. The swings are the most popular thing that we have in our entire system. So replacement costs. Capital budget per totlot, and this is with the prefabricated units. You know, there's differences when the type of swing that we're able to install, and that's based off of the site limitations first and foremost. The Firefly unit is, I'm sorry, this is the first presentation I've had to do this.
Welcome to the...
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Help me out there, Susan, I'm sorry.
Eighty-six, seven ninety.
All right, great. So eighty-seven thousand, and for the Firefly, the Rascal is a slightly bigger unit at ninety-two thousand. So that's complete demoing the totlot that's there and brand-new, sparkling, brand-new Again, when I did this, this is the comparison between the replacement cycle with pre-manufactured totlots or wooden totlots. So with pre-manufactured totlots, we're on 25-year replacement cycle, require seven totlots replaced per year at a cost of ninety-two thousand per totlot, or $644,000 annually needed. For wooden totlots, eight-year replacement cycle, that's been our experience with the wood that's allowed to be used now, requires us 22 totlots replaced per year, meaning 1.8 million dollars.
Have you given any, I assume you haven't done real budgeting for it, but any thought to, like, things like was talked about during resident speak-out, more natural playgrounds? You know, this is, the wooden forts are as cookie cutter as the rascals are, so they're different, but they're all cookie cutter, so I don't want to make the rascals just be the cookie cutter. Have you given any thought to what it would take to diversify those small totlots?
Yeah.
So they're really different, unique, but still applicable to the age range?
Yeah, we are looking, just like there was three fort, original wooden forts, we are looking for a third option to add to the Firefly and Rascal. Of course, we're finding new elements other than the fort to make them, you know, a little bit unique from totlot to totlot as well. And then we will be proposing, when we think a two-to-12-year-old range, a much bigger, you know, slightly larger play structure would be warranted. The difficulty with the natural play is there's no, the standards that we have to follow, there's really no standard for that.
So how are places that do them, how do they get to do them?
Yeah, that requires a lot of attention. Like, I'm sure Robinson Nature Center, I mean, that's, you know, they're only open, when they're open, you can't access that site without going into the facility. You just can't just go there and go to that little play area. It's something that we can do a little bit more research on and look into, but when we have, it's been, it seems like something really difficult for us to be able to handle.
And so just so I'm clear, when you said we have to, I was thinking regulations. You're talking just about the...
No, regulations.
The effort of, the level of effort.
I'd have to look more into the regulations, but there is no, the ASDM standards that we follow, there is no regulation for natural play.
So this slide has an original estimate of 511K crossed out, and that's actually the amount in the budget. So the extra 133, would that just be coming from type CAT III as discussed?
Yes, exactly. This is CAT II funding.
So you got CAT II and CAT III?
CAT III, yes. So the long-term capital cost, category two funding approximately, I'm sorry, category three funding is also used approximately $150,000 per year. That makes up the difference. A category two funding of approximately $644,000 per year will be required to meet a 25-year replacement schedule. In FY '22, the category two funding was $350,000. FY '23, category two funding was 511, and we're using category three money. In addition, it was clear we weren't going to be able to install as many bridges as the budget originally budgeted for, so that's making up some of that difference as well. So we are able to keep up with the replacement schedule this year. So the proposed plan is to adopt the intermediate replacement strategy as the long-range replacement plan, including standardizing the play structure replacement using pre-manufactured units. It doesn't have to be the Rascal or Firefly, but, you know, something equivalent. Funding requirements using, using category two funding, so continuing that, funding requirements using prefabricated play structures is $644,000 per year. That puts us on a 25-year replacement plan. CA board approval and category one funding would be required for totlots that fall outside of the current prefabricated play structure program or for any specialty totlots, including Stevens Forest, Swansfield, Dockside, because we would want that involvement in deciding on that replacement. And those playgrounds are upwards of, you know, 200,000. So it far exceeds what we were able to do in the year-to-year replacement program. Staff would provide objective criteria and data to the CA board regarding the category one totlot, so we would bring forth those projects. And then decisions regarding the consolidation of totlots due to duplication of service area and other factors would be brought to CA and village boards for approval. And I have a good example of that later in the slides.
I presume, I know, we have learned from our neighborhood center experience that we're not going to present to the villages, here's the ones we propose to close, we're going to engage them in conversation and then create the plan from that. Would I be accurate in that knowledge?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that, the criteria we would use even before we would even arrive at that decision would be the travel time, the walking distance, environmental impacts, you know, because we have totlots, streams are changing shape and, you know, all the time, safety and sightlines, visibility to others, non-park-like activities, like Bill riding the spring animals. ADA accessibility.
I can get them moving, man. It just goes one way, no?
ADA accessibility, maintenance equipment access, size and topography, the age of the totlot, and the totlot service area. And so we define the totlot service area as the number of dwellings within a 10-minute walk. And a 10-minute walk is a national standard. It's what most municipalities and Rec and Parks Association use, and that's a safe walk. So that's using, you know, crossing, you know, residential roads and sidewalks, not, you know, not tromping through the woods and the pathway systems. And we have a way of actually assessing that, that I'll show you in another slide.
I'm curious why age is a criteria rather than condition.
Yeah, you know, that's a good point. It should be, condition is really what drives that, because we have some newer ones that were built with the less effective wood that we are. So, yeah, that's a good point. So how we assess, I know this looks like a lot, this looks like a bunch of colors, and you can make out all the totlots. These are called isochrones, and it's using our GIS system, which our GIS specialist, Russell Stone, worked on this exhibit for me. The blue is, each blue block represents a 10-minute, the service area of a totlot. And the totlot's not always in the middle of it, because it's actually using our pathways and sidewalks and, you know, residential street to make sure you can get there safely. So this totlot right here, if you can see my pointer, is probably the most clear one to make out. When it has an overlap of service area, it gets a little darker shade of blue. So this is this totlot. Any home in this area would be able to walk to this totlot within 10 minutes. And you can see the duplication of service across, these are just the totlots west of 29. We can zoom in on this, obviously, when we're talking about one, you know, specific totlot or one neighborhood. You can see how dense they are in Harper's Choice and Wild Lake.
We are pretty dense in Harper's.
Kind of, you know, almost serves as a heat map in that sense. And the orange is the Howard County playgrounds as well, in that show. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, obviously Centennial, there is a crosswalk, but we wouldn't include that. We chose to keep that out. And then Bailey's Park is actually missing on this map.
Yeah, I was going to say, in Wild Lake, you have the one that's at the Village Center, but because Twin Rivers Road, which is four lanes across...
Yeah.
You don't want kids going across that. It kind of, you have to kind of do a double with this isochrome here to say, hey, well, there's, you know, 175 Jeffersons Hill and Locust Park is another one, right?
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing.
Yes. So it excludes highways, and I'm pretty sure it does it by mile per hour, but it also included, you know, crossing Harper's Farm Road, where I wouldn't personally. So we can go in, now, it didn't impact it...
Yeah.
Because that neighborhood had Raven Hill totlot, is in Raven Hill's totlot service area, so it didn't need Hobbit's Glen's totlot.
Yeah.
But we would be able to go in and manipulate these to a further extent.
Yeah.
We can also, another step we would take with these are highlighting the out parcels as well.
I notice you've left my village off your map, Dorsey.
Um, no.
You go up to 108, and you don't go ahead.
Oh, we cut it, yeah, to get it on this, we cut it off.
It happens a lot, and we don't like it.
It's kind of...
And I will say that we've got some terrific playgrounds and totlots.
Five in, five in Dorsey.
You've done a great job.
And one of the special playgrounds, yeah.
Well, to be fair, apparently, you know, you got half your...
You got the southern part.
Yeah, as you can imagine, it was really difficult to get this, you know, to really tell the story and include everything. So this is a good case study for what we're talking about and the approach that we would recommend taking. This is in Banneker, the Town Center, TC 2 and TC 3. And this is virtually 100% duplication of service area. I'm told that the reason why these two totlots were built there is because it was, you know, it was kind of, playgrounds and totlots were built at the end of cul-de-sacs, you know, back in the early days. And then also, these are two separate local homeowners association, so they each got a totlot, even though they are virtually next to each other. I can walk from here to here in 10 minutes, so the walk from this totlot to this totlot, you can almost see them, is like a minute and a half. So we can also, with the help of our GIS specialist, Russell, he's also provided the demographic data. So we're also able to overlay the demographic data over this, which we were never able to do before. And so this tot, these totlots, each of them will serve, we're able to get the age group from... group from census and Howard County data down to 0 to 14-year-olds. We can't get it perfectly to 2 to 12-year-olds, but for our purpose, 0 to 14-year-olds is effective, and that serves about 550. Now, 10 years ago, that wouldn't have been the case. That's because of the density of downtown Columbia building up. And we have others that are less than 60, you know, kids that are, you know, potentially live in that area, because we count the number of dwellings and then apply, you know, averages to those residential units. So this is a case where we could, instead of replacing each of those tot lots with a $92,000 Rascal unit that we would bring to the village boards and the CA board to propose a 2 to 12-year-old structure in this area. And we have a couple, you know, structures that we already use for that, the Twin Towers. Might be a little big for this site, but there's others, the timber unit we've used elsewhere. So we thought this was a pretty good case study for what we're discussing tonight. So the action items or the process of moving forward, we'd like to get the intermediate plan, including standardize the play structure replacement using pre-manufactured Rascal or equivalents as the standard, using category 2 funding, approve specialty tot lot funding using category 1 CA board initiative funding. Again, those are, you know, 200,000 plus to replace those units. Approve the objective criteria, so just kind of an approval of the methodology we would use to decide on the replacements. When we would add a tot lot, because we, through those isochrones and demographic information, we may discover some areas that were, we could serve better. So as many tot lots as we have, maybe, maybe there's an area that we need to add a tot lot. Removing tot lots when there's redundant service area or consolidating, there's many places where we may be able to take three and do one, you know, special tot lot or playground. And then expanding, anytime expanding a tot lot beyond the, the criteria that would be used in deciding to expand a tot lot beyond the standard tot lot.
There is one other criteria I'd like to see, and maybe you said it and I just missed it, and that's to look at what's around that one, not just, there's another tot lot, but there's a Rascal over here and there's a Firefly here, and I would also love to see, see us identified, and I wouldn't be the one doing it, several more options that would be in a similar price range, so that we look at, at a variety of different structures in different, in nearby locations, sort of isochrome that in terms of variety.
So actually, adding to your point, while I see these isochrones, I see a lot of dark blue, which suggests a lot of overlap, and that's not just one or two, that could be half a dozen overlapping. And you described that as sort of duplicative, duplicative service. I sort of look at it as an opportunity, because I think that's an opportunity where we can go in and start diversifying what our tot lots look like and having them look at, can we look at different types of play areas? Can we look at players that appeal to different age groups or even, even different interests? And if you look at, say, Blandair Park, there's a lot of different types of structures there. There's, yeah, there's those huge towers, but there's also these things that spin around. There's also these musical structures. There's a lot of, lot of different things. There's, and you can even think outside the box also, you could have, say, basketball hoops. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to try to be a little more inventive and have a lot of different types of things, because I think if we have 170 of the exact same thing, we have a lot of duplicative service, and I think we can do more. I think.
So repurposing the space.
Yeah, repurposing, repurposing it to appeal to a lot of, a much greater, a wider demographic. One thing to note is, when these tot lots, as you noted, this tot lot system was sort of envisioned back in the 60s and 70s. That's, that's 50 years ago. So Columbia is certainly a little bit different. I'm granted I wasn't here 50 or 60 years ago. But I think this might be a good time to look at, okay, now that we're 50 or 60 years in the future, so to speak, how do we need to adapt? And what kind of, and what kind of changes should we be thinking of to better serve the residents?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've got a point on base on that. Well, of course, we heard Tessa on your evening.
Your senior.
Well, of course, I come from the epicenter of tot lot discourse, being in Hickory Ridge. And, and I think that's the other action item, is how you, have you thought about how you do connect with communities? Because, you know, you've got a lot of input, and people spend a lot of time with other ideas, and I wondered if there's some sort of structure, or should that be, when something comes up, should there be some sort of plan that addresses that? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, I mean, that is what our, our plan when we're going in, like Sixpence was really unique, because it wasn't, didn't fit the criteria, it wasn't a steel structure at a neighborhood center. And, you know, approaching time something is going to be changed of that magnitude that doesn't fit the standard replacement, because working through, you know, 175 of these is, is a fairly daunting task. But, you know, our approach would be to go, to start with the village boards first.
What about taking, like the testimony we heard from Oaklawn Mills tonight, that they were much more broader than what Eric just talked about? Really rethinking it completely. You know, with, as you, I think you pointed out, one of them had a picnic table, where maybe there could be a barbecue. But the point is, it seems like they've got a very holistic approach. Is that some, would you be listening to them?
Oh, absolutely.
Good, okay.
I mean, I think that, that meets up with our vision going forward too.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it starts with really identifying when there is, you know, an opportunity, a duplication of service where, you know, the children in that area still have their playground, but we might be able to do something different or, you know, remove two out of the system to give them a better playground, or, you know, slightly expanded age group range or something.
Did you hear the fact that they were talking age groups up to our age group? The idea of getting the community, it's making it a community place.
Right, multi-generational, intergenerational is a buzzword in, in the playground now, where you can do the same activity as your grandkid, you know?
I've got one technical question. You might put swings in, and I know they're meant to be for 12-year-olds, but what are the technicals? Can, can 200-pound people still swing on them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
You're in.
Yes, they can.
Dick?
I do hope that you don't look beyond the Rascal. They're not very inspiring. I know when my kids are on playgrounds, the one thing that they loved, I don't see in any of ours, are the kind of horizontal ladders where they swing from.
Yeah, the cosmic warp has, has kind of started to replace that, because you can climb vertically and upside down.
Yeah, I mean, we need, and, yeah, I just hope you're always on the lookout, I'm sure you're always on the lookout for, for new, new ideas. The Rascal is kind of meth. And $60,000, you know, I can build a garage for $60,000.
And that, that's, yeah, they're, just that unit's not 60, but, yeah.
Good way for all the labor.
Bill?
Yeah. Thank you for staying at this late hour, so I'll try and be as brief as I can, although I could go all night about this stuff, but tot lots are a passion. I first got here in '72, I was six years old, and I lived within 200 feet of the tot lot in between Reed Brook Lane, Snowy Reach, and Downburst. And that tot lot in '72 was not intended for 2 to 5-year-olds.
Yeah, okay.
It was double A-frame, rope swings, that thing lasted well beyond my, my elementary school years, and I carry those with me every day. And so does everybody else who was ever on that. I just wanted to let you know. I appreciate the thoroughness of your report, and I think it hits a lot of the right things, the four corners of what we need as far as fiscal responsibility, the ability to program in the neighborhoods and to provide something that people will use. There's two things that I haven't heard, just from that sense of wonder that I had as a kid. Mine was wonder and the element of perceived risk versus real risk.
Yeah.
It's a very knife-edgey kind of thing, but that is what playgrounds are about. I mean, it goes, you know, Robert Simon in Resting did a whole thing on that, and it has lasted to this day. And I think that, moving forward, I think like every five years, we should look at doing something like a plan update or something, where we take a look and say, what is the, what's going on in the, the industry as far as what's the next Rascal, what's the next fort that we have, you know? So we can always be innovative. And on a, like a five-year basis, not every year, but do that, engage leaders in the playground community, have them come out and look, get the CDC out here who sets the standard for the 10-minute walk and say, this is a community that actually met the standard, and show people. And like do papers and do presentations that people understand this small miracle that we have for play equipment for kids in this community. Because I think it's, it's something we do, I mean, we're spending the middle of the night here talking about it, but it should be really loud and out front, how special this is for what we have here. The playground infrastructure is unparalleled, I think, so.
Unright, yeah.
I'll, I'll stop my comments, because I can totally.
And to, and to follow up on that, I have a four-year-old, and if there's no perceived risk, they'll create real risk.
That's right.
I guarantee it.
Dennis?
So I would propose that we move forward with the, and approve the plan as it is on the macro level, understanding that we'd be looking at different equipment, and then looking individually at Oaklawn Mills, which is clearly interested in creating a new plan. And that in and of itself is going to take some time. By the time you do the isochrones, by the time you create a community-involved program, get, because the people who live behind these things are going to be interested in what's going behind their house. It's going to take some time. If you say, in Oaklawn Mills, you can really take out, based on the isochrones, you can lose four tot lots, pick another. But that means that two are going to become bigger playgrounds, and that's going to be more people behind your house, and there are going to be people that are going to be interested. And so that's not going to be as simple as saying we're taking, and taking four hours is not simple, but you're not going to be able to say, I'm going to put two bigger tot lots or two playgrounds in. So I'd say we'd work with Oaklawn Mills, they're definitely interested, do the isochrones and the density, and look at different equipment and what can go there. And then while we're doing that, understanding that that's kind of at the micro level, on the macro level to keep the system running, you know, except for places like Bannaker where it's so clear that one has to go, that we would replace them under the program that's proposed, working in Oaklawn Mills first, and moving that out to the rest of the villages. Now, some villages, Dorsey has five. It's pretty simple. You've got five, you're only going to have five.
Don't mess with them.
Don't mess with them. And River Hills is a bunch, but there are others that have less, so some villages are easier to work in, but that's what I would suggest.
Well, I'd like to go sort of a step higher level, at the, sort of the 50,000-foot level. Can we come up with a strategy, a 50,000-foot strategy of looking at the whole thing as a system across all 10 villages? And look at, okay, what are the different types of structures that we would want or could replace it with to create that additional sense of wonder, that additional diversity amongst the tot lots, so that they're not all the same? I realize in the short term, we sort of have a path ahead, but I'm sort of thinking longer term, two, three, five years out when we're replacing more of these, can we, can we come up with a way to develop a longer-term vision for how we want the whole thing to look? Because my, my concern is, without a vision, and we just follow this tactically, we'll wind up with 170 Rascals.
So I was thinking that the vision would come out of what we learned from Oaklawn Mills in that space, but we could look at that as well. Alan had a good point, that you don't want three Rascals in a row.
Yeah.
And we'd find something else to go in there. So it's, I think it's, I think it's a combination of both of those. But we still have to have a strategy for FY '24, '25, '26, while working through with that long-term.
Yeah, we, we could, we could sort of do both at the same time. So we could tactically, obviously, in the near term, we'll have to replace it as needed, but sort of getting a couple of years out, start, start thinking about how we want things to look, Alan?
One of, at least one of the things you showed in the, for older kids, was just like a panel?
No, that was just the other elements for 2, 2 through 12-year-olds. So the cosmic warp was the 12-year-old, 2 to 12-year-old, and then we also showed the spring animal and play tables. Those are for.
Those are for younger children. Because I was just wondering if there were other elements we could add in the space that we've got.
We were looking at like a tire swing type structure recently, for when we are confined on space for the, you know, standard belt swings. So there are some other elements we're starting to look into.
Janine?
Yeah, what I think I hear Dennis and Nick saying is, you can do both in terms of you're really looking at it, be more creative with the equipment. But what I think you're talking about in the pilot is, if a community is willing to risk angry people saying, don't close that tot lot, and yet it makes no sense to keep that one open when you can do something else someplace else, if you can succeed in doing that, that's an example of whether that system will work or not, and you close some. So I think it's worth trying, and I know we had one, they were ready to close, so.
I'd also suggest other villages might also be interested in the pilot too.
Well, that's what I was, that's, that's what I was wondering about also.
So in terms of resources.
Each one's going to be a little different.
I want to underpromise and overdeliver, but this is, I mean, I can say this, but, you know, no one's sitting around the office looking for something.
Yeah, I know, I realize that.
This is a new initiative, right? This is not something we did in the past, so it's new work, and we want to get it done as fast as we can. But I don't want to overpromise, and so, you know, doing one and understanding what the public process is and how long it takes to get the accurate information, I don't want to go too fast. And maybe we do one, and we say, oh my God, this is not, not as bad as we thought, the next three can go the next year. But for me, let's piece out one.
But I guess, I guess the key next step, in my opinion, is how do we, so we talked about strategy, the key next step, I think, is how do we build that strategy? What are the steps we need to take to come up with that strategy? Andy?
I was going to say that, I mean, I like the path that Dennis laid out. You know, let's approve the intermediate, so we have, so they can follow the official guidance. But, you know, take a village and use them as a pilot to then develop, to see how things work out, to, to, to see how it all works out, to what the bigger strategy is, things like that. And I would say, you got to choose just one village. I mean, we don't have enough people to do it, and, and you got to choose one village.
That's what a pilot is, one village. That's a pilot.
Yeah, just a pilot.
You can do it everywhere, it's not a pilot.
And once you get that information, then that forms the basis for where do you go in the future? Because then you've got some hard data that, that works out. And I would suggest that, you know, on our next agenda, we put a board vote to approve the intermediate strategy.
Yeah.
So that we, we get that off our plates, and then let Dennis, then if we want, we can sit here and argue over which village, or we can tell Dennis he can choose the village.
But let's, let's let him do that.
I was going to say, I'd, I'd let Dennis, I'd dump it on Dennis, sorry, Dennis.
Well, we got two very interested people that showed up, so, and I've already got a lot of interest in Oaklawn Mills.
Where do you pick a village and see how many people show up?
I'll be right behind Nick.
But that's, that's my suggestion, let's put it on for a vote for next meeting, we get it taken care of, and then let Dennis and his team go off and work on the pilot.
Can we just do the, do two votes then? That's that one. And then the second one that I'd suggest is just tying that, that pilot program to, and the strategy, just so that we can get the diverse, you know, look at what, what playgrounds and spaces might look like, just so we, because there's also a maintenance cost associated with doing some of these other alternative pieces, and I'd be interested in seeing that.
So it actually sounds like the way you described it, three votes. So I don't want, I'm trying not to make this overly complicated, but again, you have the intermediate plan that we discussed, you have the, the pilot plan, but as you also alluded to, a, an overall strategy, and how do we get to building that strategy and creating that vision? So I think that's another thing that definitely needs to be put out there.
And the equipment. Yeah, and I believe, I know the answer to this, but just so it's out there, this, what you're recommending, this intermediate plan is already, in terms of its, next year's budget, is already reflected in the budget. There's not other.
Do we actually need to approve an intermediate plan if it's already in the budget?
So if you approve the budget, well, the, the funding's there, but it's really the thought process.
Yeah, the policy needs to be approved.
Which you've changed from a couple of years ago that you presented, you've added more to it, so it is, it is an update.
Yeah.
Than from 2020 or whatever it was.
So when you say intermediate, is there a sunset date on that? I mean, how long is an intermediate?
What's my tenure?
As long as it takes to modernize the whole tot lot system?
Maybe three to five years is what I think.
Or until the overall strategy is, you know, presented and implemented.
Any further, just?
Can we just have staff draft the resolutions?
Yeah.
And then we'll put them on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, so there'll be three of them.
Well, can't you combine it into one?
But let them figure it out, they're going to come back.
It could be, we could vote on it all as a package, but it can have three parts to it. So we can have one motion, but three resolutions.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion on this topic?
Just a quick question on the intermediate strategy, this is just me trying to understand, that we seem to get into an operational level in terms of the types and, you know, components versus, I like the idea of developing a strategy and then approving the strategy and letting the staff move forward with that. I just wanted to get a sense for, are we really going to get into the details of approving a, you know, totlot selections and, you know, all of those components, or do we really want to get to that strategy and just let it?
It's sort of a yes or no, it's sort of both. So when you're talking about the components, you're really talking about capital expenses. So when you're talking about taking a new, building a new totlot here, that's a capital expenditure, which the board approves, and the general strategy and policy the board approves, the, how you do it, the, we're not going to approve, generally, we don't approve, you're going to change this totlot today and that totlot tomorrow, and those types of things are more operational, but the general strategy, the general, and along those capital expense lines, the types of structures, the types of equipment that would go on there is, would be subject to board approval, because they represent a capital expense, and that's why we had this presentation.
Wait, wait. Wait a minute, we have never approved its structures like the fort and cobweb and swings, I mean, that's really down. We've done.
No, not to, not to.
Sixpence totlot?
Sixpence totlot, and we, and we actually have a, I mean, this plan has all these structures in it. I mean, so, no, you're not going to go and say, this totlot at this area is going to have these things in it now, but the general, the general concept of, is it going to be a rascal, is it going to be two towers, those are two very different capital expenses.
But what the intermediate strategy said is that the rascal, firefly are the default, and anything beyond that would have to come to the board because it would be more expensive, and the board would have to approve it as a category one project. So anything beyond, right, because that's what the strategy was.
$200,000?
You know, you get the rascal, firefly, the, I'll just call it the $90,000 totlot, whatever it ends up being, but if you, anything else beyond that has to come for the board for a specific approval for, like, you know, a $200,000 playground.
Alan?
Well, and that's where there's always that gray area between operations and strategy, because if we as a board, you know, our job is to approve the policy and the criteria as part of the policy, so if we say we want, as part of the criteria, an array of different choices, you know, rascal, firefly, and some more, it's, again, I'm spinning tail here, staff could come back with one other option that fits within that 92,000 budget, and we could say, yeah, that doesn't quite make an array, you know, we need more for an array. So there's, we wouldn't, you know, then they'd have to go back and flush that out some more. So there's, I get absolutely, it's, the size, you know, the budget amount fixes, but there's other criteria that, in our oversight, we need to be, we're having to ensure that policies we put together are followed.
I do have one question on the interim plan, does that include like-for-like?
Include the like?
No, no, like-for-like, so if you have something that's beyond a rascal, like?
Yes, yes, it would.
So like, again, sixpence is probably the obvious example, but that would include a like-for-like conversion?
Or something like Bannaker, we go from two to one.
Okay, Dick?
We're not going to micromanage, we're not going to be saying you put this kind of piece of equipment in this particular place, and here's how you screw in the bolts. They know what we're looking for, and our job is, you know, keep an eye on it, see how it's going, and if we have suggestions, we make suggestions, but I fully trust Dennis and his team to follow through on what we talked about tonight, they know what.
No, then, then along those lines, the reason why I was asking is, perhaps we, because the budget has all the capital expenditures in it, as, they're already there, so the idea of approving this intermediate plan, and I know it seems like nuanced, but it's back to what you were talking about, it seems to me that we should focus all of our energy on the strategy, so, you know, approving a pilot and a strategy, and then we can get the different examples that we want, we can look at the diversity of what a playground should look like, and then we can approve that strategy, and then, yes, we can check in periodically to make sure that it's in line with the strategy, but the idea of approving a.
But let us keep rolling on.
Right, but what I'm saying is, that feels operational to me in the sense that, I don't know that we need to have a vote to approve their intermediate plan for replacing structures since we've already approved the, or we will approve the budget.
That was exactly my question, but again, you're absolutely right, I mean, a board of directors should be operating at the strategic level, not the tactical level, so that's.
So in line with those three potential votes, you know, I would want to say two, right? One is the pilot, like kicking off a pilot and then writing a strategic plan.
I will defer that to Dennis.
Good.
Okay.
To, in the, in the, in the absence of micromanaging.
Yeah.
So that brings us to agenda item 4C, testimony concerning the draft general plan, and I believe we've got 25 minutes for this. I think, Andy, is this is your document?
Yeah.
Can I talk about it?
Unfortunately, was not able, I forgot about the deadline.
Should we thank Nick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Andy.
So I did implement the changes that we talked about last, last meeting, Dick sent me wording, which I put in, and then I was able to.
Those changes aren't in here? Those changes are not in front of us?
Didn't you, I thought I saw them in the last thing.
Did not.
I thought I saw them, you redlined them in.
Yeah, yeah, I sent them out, but I couldn't make it into the packet.
Okay.
That's the problem, remember?
What I got in front of me?
I told you, so I mailed each of, I didn't mail Keith, because unfortunately I have, but because I didn't make it in the packet, I wasn't around, I just emailed and asked which one you wanted.
But they're on the web.
No, they're not on the.
No, so I got a quick question for you.
Yes.
When would we be providing this testimony? What date?
Remember, March is planning board hearing.
No, planning board's done.
Oh, planning, I'm sorry, which?
Council.
Council, yeah.
So when's the council hearing?
County council.
I believe we have stuff in here that says it's going to be this summer, right?
Um, what, I guess my point is, what date would we be presenting this at?
Probably the third Monday of the month.
Which month?
March.
My understanding was, we had wanted to vote on it at the February meeting so that it was ready for March.
It should be the third Monday, and usually.
And outside of that, I don't, I mean, I don't know, because I didn't really go look at the schedule or anything, but that's what we talked about the last meeting was, we wanted it approved by March, so that it was ready.
Yeah, I realize that, I'm just trying to figure out what, what, so this is basically geared for a March county council meeting?
I think we'd have to call the county council and make sure that it is going to be on their agenda in March, and then what the hearing date would be, which would be the third Monday, but we need to know that they're really going to be hearing it then. I think that's a good point. That's what we heard, but double-check it.
Because I do have, I do have a concern that the edits didn't make it in the packet, as far as.
Public.
Being able to discuss it.
The edits were pretty minor.
Okay.
And the packet will have the new version in it. I don't think anybody came here to discuss it.
I've got a question. Well, you know, we've got different input from the community, we've got input from your village, River Hill, and I just saw we got an email from Krista Lieber as well, so we've got a few additions, things to look at, to what people have presented, so I think we ought to bear that in mind.
Okay.
I don't know, how are you going to address that, Andy?
Well, I mean, the testimony that I drafted was all based around our, the board approved, here's what we want to see in the draft plan, and so that's the basis.
Okay.
And I took that, and then I took the draft plan, and I said, well, how does it match up? And if you remember, in early January, the county had said, you know, here's your main topics, and here's the sections we think we put. So I did a more refined view of, I think, here's, here's what we wanted, here's what we told the county we wanted in the general plan, and here's how the proposed general plan stacks up, which is why I said, these are the good things we support, because it's what we asked for in our plan, and these are some of the weaknesses that we wanted, but you didn't include, and then I threw in the section on, by the way, the issues that are still addressed in the general plan, the funding and that type of stuff, still need to be considered, and, you know, so that's how it's structured, it's structured as our, our, our statement, and then how did the general plan match up to our statement? So I, truthfully, I didn't go through and do an entire analysis of the general plan, there are probably, you know, other things we can discuss about, but because of our timeframe, and because we had the board-approved statement, I said, all right, we'll focus on the board-approved statement, and how did it work?
Janine, any questions?
Yeah, Andy, just a quick question, help me with this. In terms of the village centers and the development there, what is it, activity centers? I was trying to find where CB29 would fit in, in terms of each village was required to develop their own plan for their village, and I'm not sure really sometimes how much weight the county really gives it, quite frankly, but is that out of the picture now, or?
No, because that's a zoning question, because CB9 set up the zoning process for, you know, I can't remember the right terminology, but kind of like a small renovation and a major renovation, okay, that has to be addressed at the next stage. Yes, you're right, they will probably change it, but the general plan isn't going to change it, that has to be done at the regulation level, the zoning, the next stage.
Will not change it, I'm just wondering if they're really giving any weight to it in general in the general plan, not the specifics, but saying that that is something that we have to pay attention to when we do the zoning, or it's?
Well, it's something we have to pay attention to, because the thrust of the general plan is design guidance, a movement toward, I mean, in essence, you know, our creating our plan, I mean, and making that for more formal, and so we talk about, you know, a master plan for Columbia, a master plan for an activity center, a plan for industrial area, so the general plan moves in that direction, but it doesn't tell what the details are, if that makes any sense, I mean, it's just more high-level.
Dick, you have a question?
Yeah, I've read Andy's plan very thoroughly, and it's incredibly good.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, and it really, it covers discussions that we've had over the past couple of years.
Yeah, I thought, because I thought our statement was really good. I thought our statement captured everything that we had talked about for years.
And what Andy's done is, he's really drilled down into some very specific areas. I would recommend that everybody read closely, I think you'll really like what you've seen.
I think it's, there are three pages.
So I'm going to, I'm going to sort of try to intercept things here, where I'm going to ask a general question, does anyone have any major concerns or things that they would want edited in this statement? Anyone have any, anything that they're concerned about specifically, or anything that they want added or removed? Okay, there being none, is there any objections to just placing this for a vote on the February meeting? Okay, so I think that concludes this agenda item, there's no further objections.
So we're through that, what, can I just make a comment? I'm sorry. I had a very difficult time finding our packet. We got some information from Ms. Board Operations, whoever that may be.
It could be Ms. Kim.
And it turned out to be, there wasn't any link in there, and then I tried looking it up here on the web, and went through every permutation of going through the web, one of the things I found interesting is I went to visit full meeting calendar, because it said that was where it was going to be, and, well, this meeting has no longer exists, but I noticed it's the same thing on the next meeting, you click on it, and it says down here, CA board meeting, Friday, February 24.
Dick, I can show you how to get there, I go through the web every, every.
I just hope that whoever's giving us information could.
Well, the link didn't work.
I think, I think, I think there's a mistake with the links, I think that can be.
There was a Google problem with the links, so our staff did a fine job, but there was a Google problem that even IT couldn't resolve, and it was very easy to find them on the website, right?
Yeah, I think we can, and if people have problems finding them on the website, we can come up with suggestions, but I don't think this is actually on the agenda.
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, here's something that's a little odd, when I turn to the event calendar.
Point of order.
And it says our next meeting is on Friday from midnight to 3:00 AM.
Point of order, this is not on the agenda.
I'm not going.
I mean, I just want to make sure that we have an easier way to get.
So one suggestion I have is, instead of sending out a link, just enclose the packet in the email to the board, and then people have.
I'm worried about to our residents, are they going to be showing up at midnight on Friday?
That's a good one.
Let's make sure we get this.
One quick suggestion on that, the way it was done, maybe about a year ago, where Janet did it, she had, she would send out PDF files, so that if you just want to use one, you could, and you could save it and send it to somebody else if you want to do that. So instead of a link where you get this long chain of everything, although I like on the agenda it has which pages, but we would actually get the agenda in one PDF, the Andy's report in another PDF.
Or just put the whole.
This totlot in another PDF.
Or just put the whole thing in a PDF.
No, 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 because then, this is a way you can save it and send it to somebody.
This discussion is not on the agenda, so I'd like to go up to 4D, the stream restoration. Ryan?
Yes, okay, thank you. I suppose one of the things I want to try and address is, what was said tonight on resident speak-out, is that we've got this deadline coming along, and I think I heard Dennis talking about it the other day, there is a way of getting out of the easement, but the point I found is, this has been a very complicated subject, it's taken a lot of time up, and it seems like, if, back in the day when that easement was given, I don't think the board really, really appreciated just how complex this was going to be, and gave, you know, authorized an easement, that perhaps should have had an easement should have come, maybe after you know what, offer an easement when you know what they're going to do, because one of the things, it seems like, when they went to the Army Corps of Engineers report and the MDE report, you see that it really doesn't comply with our, what Columbia Watershed Management Plan, or with the policies to implement that plan that came out, so it seems like, so what Sharon was suggesting, she just wants to stop it, but if you've got a way out to make the community feel comfortable, could you clarify that?
So there is an approval process, and it's on the, in the flow chart now, so yes.
Okay, so that, so when is, so if it's not, doesn't conform to our watershed management plan, we can turn around and get out of the easement?
So let me say a couple of things, one is that there's no, so the, you couldn't have the drawings done and then approve the easement, because they're spending hundreds, literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to create the drawings, go through the permit process, so they wouldn't have, and I'm not sure we would either, spend half a million dollars on design drawings and then come to CA and decide then you might, you know, do the job. You have to decide earlier in if it's going to basically conform with your, with your open space management plan, and then whether or not you want to approve it. So I think that. So I think that is one piece of it. The other piece of it is that what they are going to approve is only the funding mechanism that's going to address the questions that the joint agencies have. It's not a plan. So there is a three-part process. There's 30% drawings, 60% drawings, and 90% for each face. It takes years and years for this to happen. We're two years away probably from even, you know, putting a shovel in the ground on a single face. So my suggestion is let's give them, we're already deep into this thing, let's give them the two or three weeks to get the questions in and, for instance, find out if it excludes Reach 1. And I don't know, I don't have that answer. I didn't, you know, they didn't call me up and say, Dennis, here's a secret on, you know, on the plan. They're going to answer the questions and we're going to get the answers as soon as...
This is WSSI you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and let them go through the process. Let's, my suggestion is not to interfere in the contract if you don't need to. Which is if you hated Reach 1 and they come back and say, we're not going to do it anyway, why would you stop them before they tell you that? And it's a matter of two or three weeks.
Alan? Yeah, well, that gets to my question.
What?
Do, would we have the ability? I mean, what I hear from the community is the fear that once the train gets rolling, we lose our ability to refuse something. So what are the...
So we have ultimate approval on the plan, and so they would have to modify. And so what we've heard from a few people, so we've also heard from the watershed advisory committee who likes the plan.
I hear you.
Right, so it's not, it's not Columbia that's telling us to shut it down.
Understood.
It's two or three people that we've heard from here.
I hear, but what I have heard, and, you know, from the, regardless of whether we should or shouldn't, what I've heard and I've experienced myself is just a lack of awareness of what our decision points could be, that we actually have some, not just we can say, hey, we don't like this, but no, we're shutting it down. And that's what...
So we have ultimate right of refusal. And I would think so that...
When does that end?
So that ends before they start.
But once they start, it's done. What you say...
No, that ends before they put a shovel in the ground. Excuse me, that would be before they put a shovel in the ground. So we're going to see the plans at 30% in comment. We're going to see them at 60% in comment. And then, and during that process, if they have not created a plan that we can live with, we're going to say no. If they said, look, you got to take out 66 acres and clear cut, you know, all this open space, we would say no. But if they come back and say it's three trees and, you know, and two bushes, we're going to say yes.
Bill, you have a question?
I'm concerned that we put this on the agenda to talk about the funding mechanism. And what we've had so far is Brian turned his back on the entire board and had a conversation with Dennis. We haven't talked about the funding mechanism. We're talking about backing out of this contract and trying how to figure out how not to get sued. So let's talk about the funding mechanism like we said we would. Please.
Is there any further discussion on this topic? Because I don't believe this is on the agenda for a vote in two weeks, if I recall correctly.
I just have one question.
Jenny?
Yeah. The whole thing, funding, everything, you said we would have a role to approve or not, meaning staff, right?
And the watershed committee would review that.
And what?
The watershed advisory committee would review as well.
Okay. But the board, CA board, would have no role?
So when this was approved, and it is the board, you guys can, you know, change that, but when this was approved, it was going to be reviewed by the watershed advisory committee and approved by staff. That was, that is what was talked about. But you, you know, as the board, you can change that.
So, okay, I think what you're saying is if we want to change that, we'd have to put in some legislation, put in something that would change it to say the board with the staff of...
And I'd even say, let's find out if they want to do the job. You know, they might come back in three weeks and say, this has become such a nightmare and relations have changed, we're not going to do it.
No, I'm not saying that's a good idea. I'm just trying to understand it. Thanks, okay. I got a better picture of it.
Alan?
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
What you've said is exactly what I was looking for from this discussion. So for me, it meets exactly what we said we were going to put on the agenda for this short period of time that we haven't even exhausted yet. So thank you.
I'm still a little bit confused in line with that. Can you just outline, just because of the resident speak-outs that we hear also, when is our last opportunity? If I truly picked a date, is that a year out? Is it two years out that we have an opportunity?
It's, it's two years from now. They're going to be on 90% drawings on, if they do it at all, 90% drawings on the first reach.
Okay. So then realistically...
I'm not saying Reach 1, I'm saying the first reach, which might be Era 2.
So here's what I'd recommend. It sounds like there might be some desire to have a motion to also require board approval in addition to staff approval and approval from the watershed committee. So what I would recommend is when necessary, put it on the, put it on a future agenda to have a board vote to require board approval.
I would say, that's...
It doesn't have to be...
What's due, but let's give it two or three weeks.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not saying doing, I'm not saying it doing next week, but just, again, something that the board operations committee should keep in their, keep in mind. Any, yes, what?
If we're going to go down that road, we've got to make sure that there is notice given to the public. We can't do this, hey, I want to do 10 minutes on the watershed tonight and not give the public any notice on this.
That's why it goes to the BOC to schedule it accordingly.
I didn't hear the BOC. I just heard we will do it at a future meeting. And I heard tonight, well, let's just talk about it.
I said BOC, so please listen.
He said the BOC.
Any further discussion on this? There being none, we're on two questions only. Any questions? I do have one question on Hoco 17-23. How does that actually affect our, the voting eligibility in the 10 villages? Because each village votes differently.
It would, it would take precedence over that.
No, I realize that, but how would it practically affect it? So which villages are affected and how would it change the voter, the eligible voters? Andy?
All villages.
No, I realize that.
All villages will be affected, including River Hill.
I realize that. I realize that. The question, I guess what I'm looking for is a diff.
Actually, he's got a real good question, and I testified at their hearing saying it would have been nice if the legislature, the delegation, had gone to the villages first and showed it to them and then said any feedback so that they could see if there were problems with the bill drafted. In fact, there was one because I said it when talking to one delegate, it looked like it covered commercial as well. And I was told that the sponsor changed that, so it was very clear it's only residential. Because I was asking, can actually commercial, and I know we're doing this, but vote in an HOA? And so they cleared up that thing about the bill, but I, they voted anyway. They voted the next day to pass it. I think they should have consulted with the village boards.
Alan?
It's really, as far as I can tell, no way to know what the impact can be because they, there are things like different kinds of deeds. You know, so my kids are on my deed with, not because they're actively owners, but because if I die, it just goes to them without having to go through probate. So does that mean they get to vote in, in village elections? People could create a lease where every single person in their household, they could have, you know, parents and parents of parents and five kids, and all of them could be on the lease. Does that household get now 12...
The question wasn't that level of granularity. The question basically is, okay, under our current rules, this village, these people ought to, this village be...
That's village by village.
Village by village.
So that's up to village to know.
Under the new rules, how is that going to change? Who's now eligible?
It's a horrible bill and should be rejected.
So I would suggest that you each go back to your village and have them do that analysis. It's village by village, as Alan pointed out.
Yeah, so...
I agree with Susan, and you not only do that and do it quickly, is they should be contacting their legislators and legislators in their district and telling them if they have a concern. I know Oakland Mills had a concern, is how do you figure this out? We don't collect information that way. We collect property information, rightly or wrongly, and how are you going to implement something? But if you don't do something about it, this will pass because it's a Howard County bill. So it's up to you to do, do you, do what you're supposed to do with your villages.
Right. I agree.
And do it quickly because you just lost the opportunity to testify. And they voted February 8th to get it passed, so, and it's a House, a House bill, so it'll have to go over to the Senate.
Well, we could still send testimony to the legislature.
But my point is, you better get it going quickly. If you oppose it and you have concerns and you want more time in terms of you have no idea how to implement this, which I think is probably you don't, then you need to get on the phone and have your village managers on the phone, have residents in your village. Otherwise, it is on a fast track.
And CA can do it.
What?
17-23.
602.
17-23.
Delegate Feldmark is the sponsor.
17-23. Any more questions?
No.
Proposed new topics? Alan?
It's not a proposed new topic, but I want to thank you, Susan, for your stepping in to do president's duties while we didn't have a president.
Yeah.
And as well as all the other things you do and the budget and all that. And I want to thank you, Dennis, for agreeing to step into the breach here. And I think this will be, it's not the end of the story, but the first step in the healing process. So thank you for being willing to do that.
And Nick did an excellent job.
Thank you all. Now onto...
I have two new topics. I think we need to come up with a plan so we can communicate to staff and the public what the rest of this transition is supposed to entail and what the timeline and the milestones.
Yes.
So let's get that going. And secondly, I'm a little concerned that we had emails running around last night that the president was going to be selected last night. And today, before we even sat down, the Baltimore Sun already has an article online that Dennis is the new president.
What?
So this is getting really sloppy, guys. It's getting really bad. This is not very disciplined as far as the communications package with regard to this organization, and that needs to get tightened up quick.
So who's leaking?
I can't tell you who did it. I know it exists, and we need to take a look at it and find out what's going on. You can, you can do this all you want when we know as it happened.
No, I'm saying who's leaking this stuff.
Anyway.
The email went to the whole staff today, so it was public information.
I thought this came out like this morning or something.
That's weird.
But anyway, chair remarks, two things. One, for the next BOC, Lynn Egan will be on the next BOC for February 27th. And for the watershed committee, I'm going to appoint Brian to be the liaison. That be said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
You were talking next, next subjects.
We did talk subjects.
I know, you started and before I could get my...
Oh, you had another next subject?
Yes. We were supposed to get the ethics plan finished by February.
That's, I believe, on the agenda.
Is it on the agenda for me?
I believe that's on the agenda.
It's not ready for a vote, and we can have that conversation next time if you like.
Well, it is ready. The code of conduct...
It was not reviewed by an attorney, and it's...
The code of conduct is ready, and it's been, it's been reviewed by Wes.
He did not complete his...